I'd like to call this meeting to order. First, I'd like to announce that this meeting is being recorded and ask if there is anyone in the audience who is also recording this meeting. Seeing none, if we could rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
First item we have is public comment, and we have Mr. Bob Plutukas.
Good evening, Bob Plutukas, 231 Milbury Street, Town Meeting Member, Precinct One. When I was teaching in Worcester in the 1970s, the window of opportunity opened to buy US government surplus materials. Most of it was available at Fort Devens. At that time, I purchased Jim mats for $5 that cost $300 on the open market. At that time, I purchased computers. I can't tell you which ones they were, but they would sell for $300 on the open market for $30. The government buys high-quality materials. This article from the Wall Street Journal indicates that we are bringing $22 billion worth of materials, anything to build a city, trucks, tents, generators, pumps, all different sizes, back from Afghanistan through Pakistan. If we're smart, in the next year, achoo, we're going to be looking at government surplus and buying things at very low prices. If I were redoing the library, I'd be looking at the furniture. At Fort Devens, you would not believe the quality of the furniture that the generals had. It was absolutely top-notch, and it was selling for 10% of what you buy in a store. So, I'm hoping, we've got a shop town manager, she's very frugal, I'm sure she'll take this idea and put it on the agenda for every six months or so, see what salvage is available, and if it meets any of our needs. But anything you need to build a city is going to be available to towns and cities. And we should encourage Congressman McGovern to help us in this regard. He may be able to get us to earmark things. Senator Warren might be able to get us to earmark things. Back to the town, you need some spare pumps, you need a tent for recreation the size that they have at dog shows, the US government's going to sell it to you at a very low salvage price. I want to thank you for considering this, and I hope it saves the taxpayers and the towns some money. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Plutukas. The next item we have is a presentation of the audited 2012 financial statements. Are you going to make the introduction?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, I'd like to introduce tonight Tom Scanlon Jr. His company performed the audit for a period ending June 30, 2012, that is our fiscal year 2012. The audit commenced in October of '12 and was recently submitted because we had to wait for our OPEB liability report to be completed, and part of our annual disclosure date of March has been met. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to Tom, and he can express to you the findings of the report.
It's good to see everyone tonight. Finally, a nice day out. Couldn't be better than to present the audit on a night like this, I guess. You should have three reports you should have received, and I'll kind of walk through all three of them, kind of give you the general idea of each of them. The thickest one is the financial report. The whole purpose of an audit is to opine on your financial statements, to provide reasonable assurance your financial statements are free of material misstatement. I know some people think an audit is sole purpose is to find fraud on the financial statements, but that is not the sole purpose. So I know there's an expectation gap. As far as our standards go, we have to consider fraud, but it's not the sole purpose of an audit. Some financial highlights on the financial piece, the town received an unqualified opinion, which is the best opinion a community can receive, so that's worth noting. Free cash for the community was certified approximately $2.8 million. $787,000 was from unexpendated appropriations, $940,000 was from excess receipts collected over budget, state and local, and approximately $1.2 million of unused free cash rolling forward from the previous years. That is all outlined on page 18 in the budget versus actual, if you want to know the details of what certain line items were turned back. I think it's very important for a community to know where their free cash is coming from. You can see in your budget approximately $1.6, $1.7 million was generated out of the current budget. Again, free cash is non-reoccurring, so it shouldn't be utilized for reoccurring expenses. Which also be pointed out, I know the town, the past couple of years, has had some sound financial practices, which I believe were adopted this past November, which is good to see. We encourage communities to do that. We roughly audited about 80 communities. We have maybe like 10 that have documented financial policies and adhere to them. So I think that goes a long way towards your bond rating and the overall management of a community. Some other highlights on reserves, your stabilization funds, you have two of them. On June 30, they're approximately about $1.6 million. You have two other reserves, the pension reserve and capital improvement trust. Capital improvement has $1.5, and the pension reserve has about $1.4. These are your key reserves, has bond rating agencies look at you. The total of all those come to about $7.5 million. Your operating budget is approximately about $48 million. That puts your reserves at about 16%. That is very good. You want adequate reserves, about 10%. Free cash stabilization, sound budget reserves of 3 to 5. So when you get over the 10% category, you're at 16. That is very good, and that should be pointed out. And I think that's a direct result of adhering to your financial policies that you adopted the past couple of years. Your free cash has been increasing the last three years, which bond rating companies want to see. You're putting away in your stabilization, that's been increasing. So all these are good sign financial policies, which should be pointed out. Also, the town is self-insured, they have approximately $4 million in there at the end of the year. Your total claims that we paid last year was approximately $6.7 million. You have a healthy self-insurance fund. As we point out in the management letter, that should be looked at going forward, what impact you can have on future budgets and planning through premium holidays, or you can use that as another reserve, it's just sitting out in a trust. So, that's not even included in the $7.5 million that we talked about. Some other highlights on the financial end, many have heard of OPEB, it's a growing concern, its other post-employment benefits, which is roughly health insurance. It's a promises you made to your employees that you're going to pay on a certain date. The whole state is on a pay-as-you-go basis. OPEB took place, the Gatsby 45 implemented 2009, so for the past four years, you have to report that liability on your financial statements. That liability as of June 30 is approximately $21 million on your financial statements. It grows by about $5 million a year. Again, we have about 80 communities, and we have two that have thought about funding it and are funding it, and the town of Auburn is one of the two, which I think is very important to point out. In 2013, you put a half a million dollars in, which is substantial amount into your trust, and that goes a long way towards the bond rating companies. I think that it works in three segments. It was back in 2009, everyone got used to the term OPEB and what it was, and kind of got their hands around it, and then became, okay, are we going to, again, actually start and report this liability? Communities did, now the next stage is funding it, which you have started to do, so I think that is very important, too. That we do 80 of, we have two communities that are funding it and you're one. So I think that's important to point out. Your debt budget, your debt is very manageable. It's roughly about 6% of your operating budget, which is good. You don't want to see above 10%, which you're not. Your primary sources of your revenue budgets are intergovernmental and your property taxes that make up about 89% of your budget. So, those are some of the key aspects of the financial end of it. Any questions on, any of the specific questions on it? I don't want to get too detailed into this whole report, we could be here for a while.
Could you just elaborate a little bit on the unqualified opinion, so that everyone understands what you're referring to?
Yeah, basically, in the auditing world, you can, there's four opinions you can give. Unqualified, which is the best opinion, which is saying you're in accordance with GAAP. Qualified would be, you weren't in accordance with GAAP. One instance was if you didn't do OPEB, it would be a qualification, or if you didn't cover your compensated expenses, it would be an OPEB. An adverse opinion would be if we couldn't balance your cash or receivables, we'd give an adverse opinion on that. And disclaimer is, we just can't even audit your financial statements. So, that goes a long way in your bond rating companies. You know, as a highlight of the town, I think the town of Auburn is very financially responsible, and their financial reporting is excellent, in my opinion. What I mean by that is if a financial transaction comes into the system, which is either incurring a bill, or someone, a resident paying their property taxes, it gets accounted for in the system, and you're producing financial statements on a timely basis. They're in accordance with GAAP, so I think that should be pointed out also.
Great, thank you. Does anyone have any questions or comments? Mr. Casnovich, did you have anything to add?
No, not at this time.
Well, thank you so much.
I was going to highlight the other two.
Oh, go ahead, no, no, go, go.
Yeah, I just want to tie up, the other thin report, the A133 report, that's a specific report that applies to governments. If a community spends over half a million dollars in federal funds, they have to be audited. Town of Auburn received about $1.5 million in federal funds, and we had one finding in accordance with the school grants, and had to do with financial reporting with certain grants, and it was more of a matter of timing when the reports are being filed. They were based off of POs and not actual expenses. I believe it's not a material matter, but still has to be reported under a compliance audit. And then, the final report is a management letter. Also, a product of an audit is a management letter. My standards guide says to me, I have to report to you any material weaknesses or significant deficiencies. There are none in the town of Auburn, which is good. So the only highlights in the management letter are considered other matters, and they're really, they're most opportunities, more than criticisms of it, to help get to maximum reporting efficiency. So some of the areas we gave recommendations on was, there's a new law that was passed by the state allowing communities to bill other governmental units for retirees on a prorated basis for health insurance. So it allows, like the town of Auburn, if someone worked their last 10 years for the town of Auburn, but their previous 20 years have worked for another governmental unit, it allows the town of Auburn to bill that, you know, 20, 30th of that career. It's a complicated law, in my opinion. What comes with it, I feel, is an administrative burden to Eddie's office and Treasurer's office, it becomes accountability. You have to put procedures in place to bill those other communities, and also, other communities can bill you. So you have to have an idea of what is going to be in your budget. It's going to take a couple of years to get some historical trends on there. But it's also to have procedures in place to recognize that. I know Mass Teacher sends out a letter once a year, and they'll send it once. When someone retires, they won't remind you every year, so I think it's critical to establish a permanent file for those letters, so you know who to bill each year in case you have a turnover of personnel. So I think it's important to establish procedures now, but there are some burdens with the billing. Another, are there any questions on that? I know that, there usually is plenty of questions on that law.
Mr. Grossman?
I do have one question.
Yep.
Through the chair, the audit was for the year ending 2012.
Correct.
Is there anything you can advise us on with new laws coming forward that we should be paying attention to for the next audit schedule, so that we can, you know, any new laws that are going to be coming forward that we would have to be paying attention to?
Yeah, you know, I know, we believe that the audit is a year-round process, it's not, I don't show up for two weeks and then I'm out of here. And I do know your financial team, Eddie, Eddie being a major part of it, is, he's very up-to-date on researching the new laws, very active in the Accountants Association, attending meetings, so, I mean, Eddie is very active on the new laws, and we're always talking back and forth throughout the year, so, that's what I mean, when you have strong management, financial, you do have a strong financial team and management.
Great, thank you.
Anything else? Okay.
Police Off Duty is our next recommendation. Through the years and through the economy, businesses go out of business, but you've paid those offers for the time worked. You are maintaining an accounts receivable, which is a matter of housekeeping, it's starting to become a deficit, which I know Eddie's been on top of, and now it's just a matter of funding that deficit going forward, which I believe we talked about.
Yes. If I may, we're on, we're on track to offset this against ultimately the general fund. We aggressively were pursuing some old receivables out there, trying to make sure that the number is a real number, and we will, hopefully by year-end, June 30, we will, we will offset that against our general fund, undesignated fund balance. In most communities, and this goes back probably to the start of when police details started in Auburn, like any revolving account, although it's not a revolving account, there's normally advance or seed money to start the program up. I think in this case, back when this was started or initiated, that was not the case. So from a cash flow standpoint, it was always basically in a deficit balance because there's a lag in the collections. So, we've been monitoring this, we plan on correcting it and bringing it back to a level that is adequate.
And I think the next important thing to point out in the management letter is, the health insurance trust, like I stated before, you do have a healthy trust fund, and that is going to have a significant impact on budgets going forward, so it's something to consider. And I think, you know, that's why we wanted to point out in the management letter on that course of action. And then the other matters are pretty much taken care of. So we had some old grant balances that have been adjusted, some veterans' benefits, accountability of it. We put some controls in place to monitor the payments going out. And you have some older accounts receivable on personal property and motor vehicle, which you have a third party that goes out and collects those for you, deputy collector. And we, we thought it was important for you, the collector's office, to put, anytime you have a third party involved, implement some controls where you're balancing to their outstanding list, to ensure that you're getting the money. I know subsequent, we formed our field work, we had recommended that, and I believe the collector did do those procedures, and there was no problem, so, going forward, we want to see that happen. Other than that, you know, it's definitely one of our, Town of Auburn is definitely in our top 10% audit clients. I think that's real important to point out, because they are very well, financial policies, procedures are very well managed, and they're very proactive in things that come up with new laws, and constantly reviewing them.
Madam Chair, if I may?
Yes.
In closing, I'd like to thank Tom and his entire staff, they really do a great job, and for having the patience to deal with us for the time that they're here. I mean, it gets, it gets kind of crazy around here. But I think what you're seeing tonight is a reflection of really what commenced back in 2010, when we formulated a financial plan and strategy to deal with our financial position. And I think this report shows it has paid dividends. Certainly, a number of boards and committees, as well as school department administration, was committed to this, and it's really put us in a good place, and hopefully, when we go to market once again, we'll be able to get that upgrade to a AA2, and that will have a positive impact to each and every resident of this community, because we'll be paying less for the money that we're actually going out and borrow. So, thank you, Tom, and I'd like to reiterate once again that this is good news for the town of Auburn, and we are, continue to follow this path, evident by the fact that those financial policies have been adopted, and it's set some parameters for the long term.
Does anyone have any comment? Thank you for coming in and providing us with this report and the summary of it.
No problem, if you have any questions, anytime, don't hesitate, contact our office, no problem.
Thank you. And Mr. Casnovich, thank you for...
Have a good one.
And I just want to thank Mr. Casnovich for your leadership in your department, so, you're right, it is paying off. Thank you. One minute to go. The next item we have is an update on the proposed middle school project and the MSBA meeting April 3. Dr. Brunel, welcome.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, members of the board, Ms. Jacobson, Mr. Casnovich, and Mrs. Kwiatowski. I'm very pleased to be here this evening, and thank you for welcoming me back, to announce that at the April 3 MSBA Board of Directors meeting, they unanimously supported the Auburn Middle School project moving forward. Just as a little background, there are hundreds of schools that put in annually, statements of interest, or SOIs as they are referred to. Their goal being to receive MSBA's approval for either a renovation or a new school building project. In fact, they announced that last year, there were 284 that came through in the pipeline just for the SOI process. I did thank the MSBA on behalf of the School Building Committee, the School Committee, the entire Auburn community, and most especially on behalf of these students, because assuming approval by the voters in May, they will be contributing, MSBA, 58.61% of this new school project, and bringing, excuse me, allowing us to bring forward truly a state-of-the-art facility that our students deserve. Later that same evening, Rick Ringardt and Ron Proudie, the Chair and Vice Chair of the Master Plan Team, presented the team's recommendation to the School Committee regarding what should we do with the current Swanson Road School, the current middle school, once a new middle school is built. And reading directly from their recommendation, a copy of which I've provided the report to you this evening, and it also has been posted online, "If the West Street Middle School is approved and built, the committee recommends that the existing Swanson Road Middle School be used for grades 3 to 5, and that grades K to 2 be housed in two of the remaining elementary schools. We further recommend that the committee continue to work to determine which two of the four remaining schools will be used for K to 2 students, and identify means and procedures to take the two remaining schools offline." That report was presented to the School Committee on April 3 and unanimously accepted by them. Some questions I'd like to address just briefly for you that have come forward, and also to note that on the website of the Auburn Public Schools, on Wednesday of this week, on the 10th, any questions that we have will be noted there as well as answers, and everyone, yourselves included, as well as anyone in the Auburn community who has a question, please either call me with it, or use the portal on the website, and we will update that weekly. One question that has been asked is, why would the middle school, the current middle school, be appropriate for middle schoolers if it's for elementary students, excuse me, if not for middle schoolers? And the primary reason is, the current middle school is approved for overcrowding. A middle school, the educational program, has students moving from class to class. They go to a different class for English, science, social studies, math, and reading. Like the elementary schools, they also switch for physical education, gym, and music classes as well. And in middle school, they have a separate science lab space, their educational curriculum requires that, as well as foreign language spaces. Elementary schools, their program does not require that. So we, the Educational Subcommittee of the Master Plan Team, actually spent time at the middle school, we visited all of the schools as a whole team, and we looked at the current classroom layout of each of the two elementary schools, JB and PAC, that houses our 3rd through 5th graders, to make sure that there was ample space in the current Swanson Road School, and there is. There is even ample space per classroom, even if and when the modules can no longer be used. Additionally, the current Swanson Road School does have a separate cafeteria, auditorium, and actually, two gymnasiums. And for those of you who have been in our elementary schools, three of the four of them have one space that they share for cafeteria, auditorium, and gym, which really limits any flexibility and makes scheduling rather challenging. Also, the middle school currently has two technology spaces, unlike one in each of the other, the intermediate schools currently. It has two elevators in it, so therefore, students and staff can get to any and every part of the building. And also, the library space at the middle school is just 50 square feet less than the two combined from JB and PAC. Other questions, some of which were raised by this board and for others include, so here are just some responses to that. Unlike years ago, that I'm sure we remember, that many of us may have walked to school, that really is no longer the case. The vast majority of our students are either bused to school or dropped off by family members. In fact, every child on West Street is picked up at his or her driveway and brought to school by the bus, unless his or her parent decides to drive, drive them to school, just because of the, it's, there aren't sidewalks on that street. So we would continue to do that. Also, when the school first opens, and we had actually talked with the safety advisory team, that we would have them be an integral part of that, in terms of establishing new routines, as you saw last week, Mr. Moore pointed out the traffic plan, that buses would come in, all vehicles would come in through West Street, buses would come in along the front and drop off students, and cars would go along the backside and drop off. We spent an awful lot of time planning that, student safety being of the utmost concern, obviously, but wanted to make sure that there was easy in and out for drivers, not only for buses, but certainly for parents as well. So we will be utilizing the safety advisory team members during those first few weeks of school to make sure that the appropriate drop-off and pickups and those appropriate patterns are established. And then finally, a question was raised regarding, well, if we take the Auburn Middle School, which is in close proximity to the high school, and to Brenn Mall, even to JB, and put it out over on West Street, isn't that going to increase our transportation costs? And I'm happy to report that when the buses are bid, and we actually have at least one year on our bus contract and the possibility to extend another, that the price is bid based on a daily operation of the bus. Does not impact where the buses need to go, it's a per-day cost per bus, so that should not have any impact. So again, I reiterate, if there are any questions, please continue to bring those forward. Our goal continues to be to provide as comprehensive information as possible, so that the voters can make an informed decision. And I do thank you for your continued support. I believe Mr. Laurie would like to address some comments as well.
Before Mr. Laurie comes up, I just want to make a comment to you, Dr. Brunel. You know, I just want to thank you for always being available to address any questions, whether it's from this board, residents, other boards, you've made yourself available. And this is a wonderful project, it's an important project, and it's important that people have all of their questions asked, so they can go to the voting booth with confidence in this project, and I think that, that we will have great confidence in this project, so thank you.
Great, thank you very much.
Mr. Grossman has it.
Sure. Question regarding the middle school, should it become a combined of other grades? The modulas, which are currently in use, are they intended to, continue to be used, and what is the life's usage? And what is the life's usage?
The life expectancy of the modules is approximately 10 years, they've exceeded their life expectancy at this point, but through Mr. Fahey's diligence, he checks them on an annual and likely often more times than that. They still remain in good shape, we make any updates and repairs to them, but the good news is, even if those can no longer function effectively and safely for students, there still is ample space for the elementary students to be there.
Mr. Simonian has a question, and then Ms. Brotherton.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
The report that the...
Master Plan Team, yes.
Master Planning Team. I heard a lot from that report, except for one, a couple of things. It's been noted several times that there are some issues with the current middle school, so do they have a cost associated with what has to be done, or may have to be done to that school in order for it to continue to be used? Cost for offlining the other schools? And what is the plan for that?
Sure. The plan up until this point, and as I think I had shared with you, or if not, it was with Finance last week, MSBA has been very clear that they're participating in the middle school project, the new middle school project only. So, having said that, the Master Plan Team did their work that assumes up through May 21st. Once that is, receives the approval, hopefully of the voters, that team will continue, there's actually, there were two subcommittees of the plan, the Educational Subcommittee of which I spoke, and then the Existing Facilities Subcommittee. And their task will be to look at the existing facilities, two things, to determine what repairs need to be done to the current middle school, and then also which two schools they recommend to be taken offline. So, that work has not been completed as yet, but I will state also that, and this has come up at town meeting, the school district has been very purposeful in not spending all of its CIP money, saving and putting some in abeyance, and the reason being, we did not want to spend money on a school that may potentially come offline in the very near future. So, following the May 21st, hopefully affirmative vote by the voters, this Master Plan Team will pick up where they left off with this work and get some answers to those, but we don't have those currently.
Do they know when that report might be available for anyone to look at?
I will tell you that, you know, this committee was first formed in November and came forward with a recommendation in November, so imagine that same timeline, I would think that by sometime in the fall, it's likely that they would have a recommendation.
Okay.
Mrs. Brotherton, did you have something?
Yes, I did. I just want to reiterate actually what the Madam Chair had said, but I want to thank you personally, I did have a concern with the pickup, if anyone was a parent like I was, and didn't do what I was told to do. I want to thank you for getting back to me. If anyone has a question out there, please don't be afraid to ask her or the department, because they're very good about getting back, and I thank you for that very much.
Thank you very much. My pleasure.
Thank you. And I think Chairman Laurie has a presentation.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I want to thank you for giving me the opportunity to address the board and the community in regards to the good news we have received from the Massachusetts School Building Authority. Tonight, Dr. Brunel addressed some of the concerns the board had the last time you met in regards to sidewalks with Mr. Holstrom and Ms. Brotherton, and tonight, I'd like to address some of the residents' concerns that I received via phone call and email, as well as Mr. Simonian's concerns. And first, I'd like to say, I respect everyone's opinion. We may agree, we may agree to disagree, but in the end, we should be debating the issues with respect and dignity towards each other. My statements are about to make in response to public statements and a written posting on a social network made by Steve Simonian at his Auburn Selectmen, as well as other phone calls and posted questions and statements received by members of the public. I will read the entire posting, breaking it down into four quotes, with my response under each quote, providing factual data and answers to the statement posed in his letter. I steadfastly believe Steve and the voting public deserves answers to their concerns and their questions. I'm also confident that my remarks will resolve many issues that have been asked concerning moving forward with this now-approved MSBA building project. I would respect the request that I be allowed to present my entire findings, and at the conclusion, have questions I have proposed to be answered, and if there are questions for me, I would be more than pleased to respond. Steve Simonian Statement, Stephen Simonian Statement 1. Good morning, all. I'm not attempting to turn this wonderful group into a political forum in any way, but hopefully, you will understand that this post is a means to educate the people of Auburn. There are a lot of misleading rumors being spread around town regarding my position on the proposed Auburn Middle School, allow me to give you the truth. First and foremost, I'm in support of the new middle school. That being said, what I do not support is the funding mechanism. Roughly six years ago, the Selectmen set upon a path to build up excess levy with the knowledge that a middle school project would need to be undertaken. This is my response. I, as well as the entire School Committee, support the middle school project, and believe it's critically important that Auburn voters have factual and comprehensive information as they consider their very important vote. It is true that approximately six years ago, the Selectmen began building excess levy, the balance now having grown, per the town manager's recommendation, according to our Chief Financial Officer, to approximately $2,766,000. We have all known for a long time that we need a new middle school. Steve Simonian Statement Number 2. It was a concerted effort to eliminate the days of having to ask the taxpayers for a proposition to an app override every time a capital improvement project needed to be done, and also to benefit from the lessons learned with building of the high school. This philosophy also had the full support of the Finance Committee and the Chairman as well. Now that six years of prudent fiscal philosophy and responsible fiscal management has paid off, i.e. our bond rating is in good standing, we have money in our town accounts, and we have kept up with budgetary requirements, the Finance Committee and four members of the Board of Selectmen have done 180 on this philosophical, on this philosophy, and now saying that we should go to the taxpayers and ask for a debt exclusion to go outside the tax levy to fund the middle school project and leave the levy intact. This would be my response. Since the fall of 2009, the Board of Selectmen, Finance Committee, and School Committee have met on numerous occasions to work collaboratively together in the best interest of the Town of Auburn. In the review, and I have them there to make copies if anyone would like them, in the review of these recent meeting minutes from November 29th, 2009, January 12th, 2010, February 22nd, 2010, March 1st, 2011, March 20th, 2012, June 14th, 2012, to November 19th, 2012, I see no reference to a decision by those three boards to fund the middle school project using excess levy. However, I do see a vote to support this project through a debt exclusion. In the meeting minutes of March 20th, 2012, and June 14th, 2012, and November 19th, 2012, it was explained that options existed to purchase the land and build a new middle school to include a debt exclusion, or by using excess levy. At the November 19th, 2012 joint collaborative meeting, the three boards were asked to vote in favor of the option they believed was most appropriate. In total, the vote was 13 and 2 to 2 in favor of a debt exclusion. Comments made in support of that vote focused on the fact that Auburn voters should have a direct say in determining if they wanted to support a large-scale capital project. Additional comments included the importance of having excess levy intact to address emergency issues if should they arrive. Arise, in no meeting minutes, am I able to find that a vote was taken to use excess levy? However, meeting minutes do clearly reflect a vote to support a debt exclusion. Mr. Simonian voted in opposition of that vote, but it does not mean that that vote did not happen. Steve Simonian Statement Number 3. Secondly, when we voted roughly two years ago to spend $600,000 for the middle school feasibility study, that vote was taken with the understanding that we were using the excess levy for this project. There had been no discussion of a debt exclusion, no valid argument had been presented for this change in philosophy, other than we should send it to the voters. My counterpoint to that is that if we are going to send this to the voters, it should have done, been done so from day one exclamation point. This is my response. Again, in my review of meeting minutes, while it is true, there was discussion of options on how to fund the middle school project, debt exclusion or excess levy, the only vote I can find was on November 19th, 2012, 13 to 2 in favor of a debt exclusion. At the March 20th, 2012 meeting, Selectmen stated that she strongly believes that the voters should decide and have a voice in major town projects. At that same meeting, a Finance Committee member asked how using the entire excess levy would impact the bond rating, which Mr. Kasnovich indicated could have a negative impact. The town has worked very hard to improve our bond rating, which impacts all borrowing the town does, so why would we want to risk negatively impacting that? Finally, at the November 19th, 2012 meeting, a Finance Committee member indicated he believed that the middle school project should go on the ballot, with another member stating that excess levy should be used for emergencies or unexpected circumstance. The $600,000 needed that's mentioned by Mr. Simonian for the feasibility study was sent to the town meeting members at the May 2011 annual town meeting, following a presentation to the Board of Selectmen, Finance Committee, and School Committee at a joint collaborative meeting held on March 1st, 2011. They voted their support of the Auburn Middle School feasibility study, and it went before town meeting, and but for one vote, received their unanimous support. Keep in mind that the $600,000, as reported at the March 1st collaborative meeting, would actually only cost the taxpayers approximately $180,000, because MSBA would reimburse 54.16% of the total cost, plus $75,000 had already been set aside for the master plan, and $20,000 for a project director, project director. In fact, there has been no change in philosophy. Your belief is that a $44,511,234 project, as approved by the MSBA on April 3rd, should be approved by the 120 town meeting members alone. By a vote of 13 to 2, the decision was supported to send it to the Auburn voters, the belief being that they deserved a say in this decision. Statement Number 4 by Steve Simonian, this will be the last that I read to you. Steve says, "You should have been asked if you wanted to spend $600,000 of your money on a feasibility study. Essentially, what is taking place now is that you are being held hostage with your own money, and scare tactics have been issued that the new middle school will not be built if the debt exclusion is not passed. This could not be further from the truth. As I said, what I am hoping to avoid is a debt exclusion, and a tax increase to build a middle school, and then an additional tax increase when the excess levy is spent. We don't, we do not need it, and in this economy, it is fiscally irresponsible to put the taxpayers in such a precarious position. The original plan has served us well, and put us in better financial position than any other town in Central Mass. There is no reason to put an additional tax burden on the residents of Auburn when there is no need to do so. If the debt exclusion fails, the middle school will still be built. We will do it the responsible way and pay for it through the excess levy that has been raised. If anyone has any questions, please email me at ssimonian@town.auburn.ma.us, I'll be happy to set up the time to talk. Thank you, Steve Simonian, Auburn Board of Selectmen." This is my final response. And I'd ask, we hold questions until I'm done with my entire statement, and then we can go back to them, I can reread them. Steve, you have stated on numerous occasions now that if the voters do not approve the debt exclusion, the new middle school will still be built. How will that happen? You have stated the taxpayers are being held hostage with their money. How so? By a vote of 13 to 2, the decision was made to support sending this large capital project to the voters for their approval, the members believing that all voters deserve the opportunity to make the decision. The definition of a scare tactic is, a strategy using fear to influence the public's reaction. I am concerned that you are doing just that, trying to influence people with misinformation, which could result in the debt exclusion failing, when in fact, the factual information supports the use of a debt exclusion, which we should all be working together to support. Mr. Kasnovich, is my understanding that using the entire excess levy, or at least a large portion of it, could have a negative impact on the bond rating that the town has worked so hard to improve and continues to work hard to improve even further? Is that true, and could you elaborate on that? The Board of Selectmen voted on November 19th, 2012, by a vote of 4 to 1 to send this large-scale capital project to the voters for their approval. Their reason being that they believed the voters of Auburn deserve the opportunity to make an informed decision. I don't see any evidence of there ever having been a vote to use the excess levy, as you have stated on numerous occasions. We are in a position to receive state reimbursement from MSBA of $19,763,951, which represents 58.61% of the eligible costs. If we get this project approved within the 120 days of MSBA's unanimous approval on April 3rd, if we do not receive that support, the owner's project manager, Skanska, has indicated that we will need to reapply for another statement of interest, and with over 1,000 projects on the waiting list, it would likely be years before the Auburn Middle School could be reconsidered. Mr. Simonian, are you advocating on calling for an emergency town meeting if the debt exclusion fails and circumvent the voters, and still would there be ample time to do that? Dr. Brunel, can you explain further what the MSBA 120-day window entails, and reiterate to when I referred the clock started ticking? I would offer that there would not be ample time to hold an election for the citizens of Auburn to participate in a non-binding voter election to approve the use of excess levy. The special election would have to take place after the Board of Selectmen and Finance Committee approved the Warren article for a special town meeting to vote, as they are the only government body that can ultimately approve the use of excess levy. Through my inquiry, the special election for the United States Senate, scheduled on June 25th, 2013, will not allow a non-binding question to be placed on that ballot. Even if it did, the timeframe to add the question would have elapsed, hence the need for a special election at the cost of $10,000. This is not a scare tactic, this is not propaganda, this is reality. The 120 days given by the MSBA will lapse. If the middle school MSBA project vote on May 21st is no, we will move behind 1,000-plus school building projects. It will be a repeat of history, like what took place during the Auburn High School project. I think it's important to note that regardless of how this project is funded, debt exclusion or excess levy, there will be a cost impact, will be exactly the same. For the average home value in Auburn of $222,492, it will be $46 in year one, $52 in year two, and $177 in year three through 20. We all respect that the voters of Auburn are being asked to support the building of a new middle school for our students and investment in their futures. It has been represented that if the debt exclusion is approved, there will be an additional tax increase when the excess levy is spent. Again, I see this as a scare tactic, as recent history does not bear this out as factual information but mere conjecture. Mr. Kasnovich, when was the last time that excess levy was used to support pay raises or for any other purpose for that matter? Through the collaborative efforts of many, the town is not taxed to the levy limit, so where is the evidence that such spending will now begin to occur? I fully support this construction of the new Auburn Middle School, and Steve, you have stated you do as well. I'm hopeful that you will reconsider your position and stop attempting to discourage voters from approving this project through the debt exclusion. It took nearly 20 years to get the high school passed, and none of us wants to see that happen with the middle school project. Rather than divide people on this issue, I respectfully ask that you reconsider your opposition of it as you are, as you have stated on numerous occasions, you are in favor of the project. The reasons for Auburn's financial, solid financial position is because there has been a wide-scale commitment of working together to solve problems. We have been successful in doing that, and I invite the entire Board of Selectmen to be a part of the solution, and let's get this middle school project approved. In closing, several years ago, I stood before this board, Bob Grossman, you were the Chair, and I played a small part, very small part, in working with town administration and other groups to avoid layoffs, consolidate health plans, and accept wage concessions. This was accomplished, as stated earlier, by working together, and people making sacrifices in a collaborative effort for the benefit of the community at large. So ultimately, our services were not adversely affected. I stand before you today knowing that in all likelihood, 50 years from now, no one will remember what was said here today, but if that middle school is built, we have ensured that our future, Auburn's most precious resource, our children, will flourish beyond the 50 years I just mentioned. The trickle-down effect will also ensure Auburn is a place for others to emulate, a community that believes in supporting our residents, businesses, as well as education, and the town is willing to make sacrifices for the betterment of our community. This past weekend, I attended a funeral for one of my very best friend's 47-year-old wife who succumbed to cancer. As we all reflect on the loss of those we care about, it teaches us how precious life is. We must seize every moment, life is a gift. I believe that we all must follow our convictions. My statements today should not be perceived as an attack on anyone. We are entitled to our own opinions, and I respect that, as I sincerely respect Steve Simonian. My statements are to provide facts and data to answer questions and statements posed to those that are not sure if they will support or not support the middle school project. We have the opportunity to make a difference in the future of our community, and I for one believe we must seize that opportunity. Whether you vote no for the project, or you vote yes, like the banner as you enter our state-of-the-art Auburn High School reads, "We are Auburn," it is with great pride, and it's truly an honor that I stand before all of you here today, advocating for our children and our town's future, and I thank you for giving me this opportunity. And if we could go back, I would first like to start, because I would like to give Steve a final word on this, I'd like to go back to the questions posed to Mr. Kasnovich. When we talk about excess levy, if we use a large portion of it, or if we use all of it to build this 20-year project, what is the effect on our bond rating and future rates, as was proposed earlier in your first presentation?
I just, I just like questions addressed through the chair, and so I know where they're going. Okay, thank you. Mr. Kasnovich, thank you.
Through the chair to Mr. Laurie, I was hoping you would ask the easier the questions for us. As I stated before the Finance Committee last week, that same question was asked. Unfortunately, I can't read the crystal ball, because this borrowing would take place in the future, and certainly, a number of elements come into play when a community is rating, rated. Although it has been of some concern to us, and we actually asked our analyst, Ed Moody's, what the impacts would be if we were to do it through excess levy. Certainly, their position is that they would advocate that a community do it through a debt exclusion vote and not through excess levy, for a number of reasons. Number one, that's eroding a current reserve that we have, the ability to tax if something should, if we should go into another economic downturn, if we lose state aid, if local receipts suffer because of economic bad times. The excess levy is there, is a backstop if things of that nature should happen. So, not to directly answer the question, but certainly, it could be, it could mean a downgrade if other factors are not being supported to the level that they are to the... a downgrade if other factors are not being supported to the level that they are today. You've got to remember, this is something that's going to happen in the future. Certainly, we are on the right track. We have put financial plans in place to preserve what we currently have with intended future It could go either way.
And through the chair.
Yes.
When was the last time the excess levy was used to support, and as I said earlier, pay raises or for any other purpose for that matter?
As I mentioned earlier, we put a financial plan in place beginning in 2010. We began to build up our excess levy since '09. If many of you sitting out there know that we have not taxed at a rate in excess of 2.5%, we've been taxing at a rate of 1.25% or less. That being said, we haven't used any portion of the excess levy since 2009, and there is no intent to use excess levy in future years' budgets.
Thank you. And just to keep with this, and if I hit it all, that's fine, but through the chair, if Dr. Brunel, if you could explain if I didn't do it adequately enough concerning the MSBA 120 window entails, and just what does that mean for the project?
Through the chair, the clock started ticking on August 3rd, so in effect, we have, excuse me, on April 3rd, so we have until August 3rd to receive the approval on this. Mr. Niedler actually included a slide in the presentation that we've been sharing across the community, and there are steps we would need to follow. We would need to make a presentation, written presentation to MSBA, on the reasons why we believe the vote failed. But what he indicated is, in any other community where it has failed to receive approval within 120 days, a new statement of interest must be submitted, and goes to the back of the pact, and there are over 1,000 current statement of interest on file at the MSBA.
And coming before you tonight was obviously difficult, but when I saw some of the questions being proposed and some of the literature that was out there, I wanted to address it. Steve specifically, hoping I would put you at ease with some of the questions that you had by supplying some facts and data in regards to numbers, the window, the date of this project, et cetera. So I'll go back to that question I gave you, that you stated on numerous occasions that if the voters do not approve the debt exclusion, the middle school will still be built. I'm asking, how will that happen? I just don't know, looking at the calendar, how we would possibly get that done. And that would then go to my second question, as far as, are you looking to call for a special town meeting to just put this project through town meeting for a debt exclusion? I mean, for, excuse me, to utilize excess levy just through town meeting?
Through the chair, I'll respond in this fashion. You and I are both playing a game of what-if here, and you're twisting some of what's been said, and you're twisting some of what's transpired, because, you're right, there was one vote, but prior to that vote, any discussion regarding a middle school project, there was never a mention of going outside the levy to do that project. I sat as a town meeting member prior to sitting on this board and heard discussion of building up our excess levy to do capital improvement projects and improve the town's standing. I also recall statements made, I believe it was Senator Moore, I could be wrong, but if not, it was one of our legislators, there was a statement made that we needed to be careful. If we were to continue to build excess levy and not spend it, it could hurt us as far as state aid. So I guess, you have your opinion, I have mine. A lot of your opinion is built on the what-ifs that you believe in, a lot of my opinion is built on the what-ifs that I believe in. Mr. Kasenovic has stated several what-ifs. He said during the joint meeting, spending the levy could negatively impact us. It also could not. One of the things that bothers me the most is that many of the people that I have heard talk about the excess levy being spent conveniently leave out the fact that we can continue to start building that levy again, and that is part of our financial plan to do so. So in my opinion, it's a convenient truth as to how you want to influence people. I stand by my opinion. I stand by what I said. A little of it may not be entirely correct, and I will say that, again, I do support the project, and if the window closes, then the window closes, and we maybe do it a couple of years later, I understand it's needed. But I would say that in my life's experience, a rush to do anything is usually a bad way to do it. If you're hell-bent on doing something, you're going to miss a lot of things along the way. Case in point, I will offer up several town meeting members, when I was a town meeting member, who were very angered at the fact that we had to spend an additional, I believe it was somewhere around $900,000, to complete the basketball and tennis courts at Drury Square, because in the rush to get that piece done, someone missed a detail such as an old drainage ditch being located underneath that property. I would ask, how much money had we spent on engineers and other things up to that point? So, sure, I want to see it done, but I don't want to see it done in the sense that we do similar things and wind up having to continually go back to town meeting and say, "Well, we missed this, we need more money to complete it." It's not the way it should be done. And regarding the feasibility study, I will again say, no mention whatsoever during any conversation, and the Finance Committee did in fact advocate for building up the levy to do capital improvement projects and then changed their philosophy. But it's an old salesman's tactic. If you can get somebody to put a little bit of skin in the game, you can get more money out of them later. My feeling has been from the start, if there was the thought in anyone's head during any of those discussions before it came to a vote, that they might consider sending an override to the taxpayers, then that should have been brought up before even one penny was spent. I don't care if it was $600,000, $180,000, $54,000. That's not our money. That is money that we take from people who go get up every day, leave their family, go to work, earn a living, and we take their money to pay for stuff here. Everybody understands that great schools, great police, great fire are all part of having a wonderful community, and I wouldn't argue that. I believe the same thing. But we have other things, we're continuing to pay off the high school. We've got Bay Path, we've got other things, and I just think that this is not the way to do it. So I guess I would conclude by saying that, if you're going to sit up here and read my statements and rip them apart, almost to the point of bully tactics, I would say, then put your entire opinion out there and allow other people to do the same.
Well, Mr. Simmonian, through the chair, I just finished this, and when I got ahold of it, I started working on it. So this will be, just like yours, for everyone to read, what I just presented here today will be to read. You posted something on a public forum. You listed yourself as a politician, and I did not paraphrase anything. I read your statement verbatim.
I'm not saying you paraphrase my statements.
And all I did was give.
We're not going to talk over each other. We're going to...
So I think at the end of the day, we do, we agree to disagree. I have faith in the recommendation that was made to the committees. It was a 13 to two vote. This was the decision that was made, and I'm supporting this project going forward as a debt exclusion, and I hope the town as a whole supports the project.
In your rebuttal, Mr. Laurie, you're doing the same exact thing that you did earlier. You're again twisting part of what I said. And as I said, you're leaving out convenient pieces. So I'm not going to keep going back and forth. I stated my opinion, I believe in it, I think that the voters have the right to vote on it, and I never advocated for having town meetings supersede the voters. My feeling from the beginning was, if there was ever a thought in anyone's mind that was involved in those joint meetings, Finance Committee, School Committee, or Board of Selectmen, that we would do this through an override, then that should have been brought to the table from day one. It shouldn't have been brought to the table after the taxpayers had some skin in the game. It should have been a non-binding referendum on the ballot to ask them, "Do you want to spend the levy to pay for the middle school?" And if they said no, fine, do you want to do an override? We never gave them that option. So when we say we're going to the voters, we're going to the voters in about the fifth inning of the game.
I don't agree with you.
And that's fine. I appreciate your comments. Thank you.
I agree to disagree. Thank you.
So, Mr. Laurie, if you can just wait for a minute. So I just want to, I've taken a couple notes here, and I just want to say that since I've been on this board, I am not aware of any vote that was taken to use, if I could finish my statement, Mr. Simmonian. I'm not aware of any vote that was taken. Yes, a couple of members mentioned, "Wouldn't it be nice if we could build a middle school with excess levy?" We all sat at a joint meeting with Finance, School Committee, and the Board of Selectmen. It was set at that time. If that was the intent of the boards, a motion should have been made at that time, so everyone was on the same page. I'd like to make a motion that we move forward to using excess levy to build a middle school. The comment was made, and there was no support in the room at that joint meeting for that statement, and the statement died, and the commenter did not make it in the form of a motion. So there's never, and I'm not going to say that a couple of members of the Board of Selectmen had expressed their interest in using excess levy for the middle school. If it was truly the intent of the board, a formal vote should have been taken, brought to the School Committee, brought to the Finance Committee. And regarding the feasibility study, you need something to bring to the voters. You can't just say, "Do you want to build a middle school?" You need a feasibility study to say, "This is the project we're looking at. Do we have voter support?" I mean, that happens in all communities. You have to spend money on the feasibility study, and as Mr. Laurie said, it wasn't the $180,000. And I'll comment on something else. The window, if the window closes, the window closes, we can get this back on the list in a couple of years. Well, I was listening this morning, and I'm saying it was on the radio, Holden was pitching their project for tonight. They were taking a vote, and they had unanimous support from the Board of Selectmen, Finance Committee, and School Committee, and they said there are well over, they were told by SBA that there are well over 1,000 projects on that list, and if their project fails, it would be 10 years before, not a couple of years, but 10 years before another project would even be considered. So this won't happen in a couple of years.
And through the chair, that's why I really, Steve, it's not that I'm trying to cut apart or do anything dirty with your letters, that's exactly it. There were some things in there that I thought were inconsistent, that if you're going to post for people to read in social settings, I just wanted to address that. So I was hoping to put your mind at ease with some of these things that...
My mind has always been at ease.
The window closes, the middle school won't be built till our kids are graduated college, Steve.
Again, that's a what-if. You don't know that, and I'm going to tell you right now, there's not a person sitting in...
I can only tell you the data.
We're not going to do this back and forth.
Sitting in this room, everyone in this room is probably roughly within five to 10 years of our age, there's not a person sitting in this room who could truthfully say that when money's on the table, the government doesn't act. So let's, you can sit here and say 10 years all you want.
I'm insulted by the statement.
It's another what-if.
Sulted by it.
Could I finish? You can say 10 years all you want, it's another what-if. There is no concrete, and that question was asked two times during the joint meetings, during two different joint meetings with the MSBA, and 10 years was never mentioned. So, again, let's put...
I didn't say 10 years.
Let's put all the cards on the table. Let's not put some of the cards on the table. And as far as the feasibility study, I'm not stupid. I understand the feasibility study. We discussed that. I understand it needs to be done. My point was, all of the discussion by the Finance Committee when I was a town meeting member, anytime excess levy and capital improvement and the middle school came up, all that was ever talked about was excess levy. There was never, ever a mention of an override. I never heard it once, until after that money had been spent. And I will stand by that statement, because I was a town meeting member, I was on the Board of Selectmen, it's been five years now, and never once heard anyone talk about an override. I did hear the chairman of the Finance Committee advocate for building up excess levy to do capital improvement projects, and then all of a sudden, that changed, "Well, we should save it for an emergency."
But a capital improvement project may be an emergency.
It may be.
So there was no statement that, "Let's build up the excess levy for a capital project, specifically the middle school." As I stated, the vote should have been taken, so, I mean, this board changes, the School Committee changes, the Finance Committee members change, if there was a record in any minutes to show that, but there isn't. I'm going to let Mrs. Gribbin speak.
There is no record of a vote, because only one vote was taken. What I'm saying is, the conversation continued to center around using excess levy.
Mrs. Gribbin has been recognized.
I was at those meetings as well, Mr. Simmonian, and I never remember the group agreeing that we would use the excess levy. It was always about debt exclusion, and Mrs. Goodrich is correct. Two members talked about the fact that they would like to see it used with excess levy, and everybody else was, although a vote was not taken, nobody else stood in favor of that or spoke in favor of that. And I would ask that anybody else who was at that meeting or any of those meetings to speak up and try to remember what you recall.
Through the chair, nobody, no one spoke for the levy, no one spoke against using levy, and no one spoke for debt exclusion. There was never a mention of it. And again, this is what I mean about misrepresenting the facts.
Mr. Laurie, did you have something else?
I was hoping to, hopefully, some people that are listening are in attendance, some of the issues have been clarified for them. If anyone has any questions, by all means, please call me. I have received several calls on this. And again, just as I looked and watched online, and there were others having debates back and forth, this isn't the spirit of we're neighbors. We're all trying to advocate for our children. We all have our own convictions, as I stated earlier, and I respect that. I was just hoping that maybe you would soften your stance after hearing some of the things I had to say. And by no means was this an attack on you, it was just addressing some of your words and your concerns.
That's fine. I have a position, you have a position. You keep saying that it should be civil. I agree. I have been since day one. I'd ask anyone on the School Committee here, anyone on the Board of Selectmen here, anyone on the Finance Committee who's here, if they have been sworn at in front of their children because of the position they took on this. Really? And you stand here and say we should be neighbors? And I continue to hear comments...
Are you saying that I swore it?
That other elected officials have said behind my back, "This is being civil, this is being neighbors." I mean, let's put, again, let's put all the cards on the table.
Have I done that to you in any way?
I don't know. I don't know, but I've heard it enough times. You hear it once, you hear it twice, maybe, you know, someone's just trying to ruffle your feathers. When you hear it 10 or 15 times, there's probably some truth to it.
I can tell you that I have not said anything, sworn at you, acted in any way other than a professional person treating you like a gentleman, and that's all I can say to that.
Day one, since I came on this board, I've advocated for the taxpayers. I have always advocated for the taxpayers. They put me here, and I stand up for them. I'm their representative, elected representative, to be here.
That's our common bond. I feel the same way.
I have an opinion that is also the opinion of several people who have contacted me. They don't want to, they can't, or maybe don't want to be here to speak publicly. I'm the voice of those people. I've made myself as accessible as possible to the residents of this town. So you're doing your job, I'm doing mine, that we were elected to do. We have a difference of opinion, I'll leave it at that.
Thank you.
We have a couple more people that want to speak, but as chairman, I would ask any member who's speaking on this issue, if you are out posting anything publicly as a member of the Board of Selectmen, if you are speaking publicly, posting anything in written format, that you, until a vote of the Board of Selectmen is taken, if it is, a position on this project, that you please say that this is your opinion as an individual selectman, so it does not give the impression that it is the opinion of the board.
I've never said anything but...
I didn't say it. You did, Mr. Simmonian, and for the record, I'm asking all members, if they're speaking about this project, to please make it clear that they are speaking for themselves. Mrs. Holstrom, and then Dr. Brunel.
Good evening. Through the chair to Mr. Kasenovic, is that all right if I ask him a question?
Yes.
Eddie, the effect on the taxpayer, whether we do a debt exclusion or excess levy, is exactly the same, isn't it?
Through the chair to Mrs. Holstrom, that is correct.
So whether we do a debt exclusion vote, it's going to cost the average taxpayer $177,000. $177,000. 177 dollars, if that's the number I heard. And if you do excess levy, it's going to cost the same 177 dollars.
Through the chair once again. Bottom line, it's going to require an appropriation to pay for the debt and interest to construct and equip a new middle school. That appropriation, whether it's done through a debt exclusion vote or whether it's done through excess levy, the tax impact is going to be identical.
So, excess levy, just so people are clear, is money we have not raised. So, people's taxes will go up regardless of the mechanism you use. So, excess levy is not a cheaper way of doing this project.
Excess levy gives the municipality the ability to tax an additional, as it's been identified in the FY14 budget, an additional 2.7 million dollars for whatever. The town has chosen not to tax to 100%. We're taxing it 92%. So that 2.7 is actually, represents about 7 to 8% of available appropriation that we are currently not taxing.
And the only body that can appropriate that money is the town meeting, correct?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Dr. Brunel.
Through the chair, I just wanted to address, assure the Board of Selectmen as well as the Auburn voters, that the statement of interest was approved for the middle school project in 2007. And I can attest, being a member of the School Building Committee since that time, when we finished the high school project and began this, that extreme due diligence has been done on the part of the School Building Committee members. Mark Yamsy is our Chairperson and Mr. Page is our Vice Chairperson. And we have met on a regular basis. So I wanted to assure everyone that every step required in MSBA has been followed. We have sought and received all approvals. So, we are ready to go with this project once approved.
Mr. Simonian.
Yeah. So, since everybody wants to continue to live in the world of what if, through the chair to Mr. Kasnovich, what will be the net effect to the taxpayers if we were to, if, if an override were to be passed to pay for the middle school, and then we were to spend the levy?
Spend the levy for what purpose?
Let's say an emergency capital improvement project came up, or any capital improvement project, we decided, hey, yeah, you know, we think we should do this.
All right. Once again, if you are to raise an appropriation through a debt exclusion vote, the numbers that have been presented tonight at 177 in year three through year 20 would remain until such debt is retired, and then taxation would be lowered by that value. During that course of time, if excess levy is decided to be used, for whatever reason, one-time capital, whatever other available appropriation is required, it would need an additional tax as well.
Do you know what the dollar value of spending the levy would be to the taxpayers?
No, not a 2.7 million.
And, and to be clear, if an override is passed, then, as the point has been made, it would only take going to town meeting roughly 80 out of 6,000, 16,000 people to then spend the levy.
That is correct. But as I mentioned at that, that joint meeting, that recommendation would have to start with the town manager.
I understand that.
Right? And it would have to work its way through the Board of Selectmen, the Finance Committee, and ultimately, town meeting. Based upon the financial policies that have been set in motion and approved by the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee, and with a five-year plan on a budgetary basis that is part of that, there is no intent to spend any of the excess levy.
There's no intent. I, I understand that. There's no intent right now. But the Chairman herself made the point, we don't know what will happen down the road. So, it is possible. And it would have a further tax impact on the resident-
And I say, what is it going to be spent on? For instance, if a fire truck is needed, and that fire truck costs 1 million dollars, town meeting could ultimately appropriate that 1 million dollars, but that 1 million dollars is only a one-time appropriation. So you would utilize it for one year only, and it would revert back to excess levy the following year.
Ms. Jacobson.
Through the chair, if I may also address Mr. Simonian, I just want to reiterate, since I would be the one making the recommendation, I have no plan to use the excess levy. My only plan has been, I've stated it, I'll continue to state it, to build that excess levy for an emergency, potentially for an emergency that involves a capital expenditure. Building a middle school is not an emergency. It doesn't warrant our recommendation for excess levy at this point. That is not our decision. We are leaving that, obviously, to the voters when it goes on the, on the ballot. But because it's been mentioned, what happens if we use the excess levy? What is the cost to the town? What happens? At any point, the town manager makes a recommendation to the Board of Selectmen, it goes to the Finance Committee, it goes to town meeting, that can happen at any point. We've not had any of those discussions, we've not stated it. As a matter of fact, we've stated the opposite. So I just want to be perfectly clear on my position. I'm not standing here today, nor have I in the last two years, nor do I intend on it, standing here and recommending that we use the excess levy because it exists. Just because it's there doesn't mean we have to spend it. We have worked very hard on a financial team to keep that excess levy growing and to protect that excess levy for when we may need it, again, for an emergency. So I just want to be clear. That is not my intent. The recommendation would have to come from me, and I have no intention of doing that. And I also want to be clear, it was brought up by Mr. Laurie, and I know Mr. Kasnovich answered it, but I just want to be clear, that excess levy has never been used for salary adjustments, nor will it be. Thank you.
I had a question for Mr. Kasnovich. You mentioned the 177 would be the amount for years three through 20 if we use debt exclusion. What happens after year 20 if we use excess levy?
There's no guarantee that that will revert back to the taxpayers. Certainly, is, is a recommendation from the town manager, we're not going to be here in 20 years. So what future manager or what future Chief Financial Officer will do if that were to be funded through excess levy, we can't commit to.
But if it's a debt exclusion, when the debt is-
If it's a debt exclusion, it's guaranteed to-
After 20 years. Okay, thank you. Mr. Simonian, did you have something, Mr. Holstrom?
I, through the chair, Mr. Kasnovich, you said if we use debt exclusion override, it's guaranteed to revert back? In that, isn't it true that that's not really the case?
That's really the case.
But we could, as we did, as, as we did with the high school, that debt exclusion is going to be used for some, it's not going to be retired at the end of 20 years, isn't that correct?
No, it will be retired in 2024. That debt falls off. We can no longer raise that on the tax recap sheet as a debt exclusion. It's raised for a fixed period of time, consistent with the term of the bond proceeds.
Then what was the discussion the Finance Committee had regarding using, something having to do with payment for the Pappas Park, regarding that money that was already on the books?
We never, we never raised any money via a debt exclusion vote for the Pappas complex.
So every, every debt exclusion the town's ever raised has ended and gone, and-
Yes.
Does anyone else have anything? Any members have anything? Okay, we're going to move on. Thank you for coming in. The next item on the agenda is the town manager's evaluation. As you know, board members completed their evaluations, provided them to me as Chair. Vice Chairman Grossman and myself did a summary of the evaluations. Some members provided comments at the time, which are included in your packets. Other members just read the scores. I would like to first read the letter that I provided to Ms. Jacobson when Chairman Grossman and I met with her for the initial meeting regarding her annual review. Julie Jacobson, Town Manager. Dear Julie, I am pleased to provide you with the summary of your two-year evaluation by the Board of Selectmen. As you know, board members were to submit their completed evaluations with any written comments to me by March 15, 2013. I then met with Vice Chairman Grossman to develop a summary of the evaluations. I, along with Selectwoman Brotherton and Selectman Holstrom, provided written comments. Selectman Grossman and Simonian did not provide any written comments, but did complete a year-two evaluation. The evaluation was based on the approved evaluation form and four additional town manager goals. The average Board of Selectmen score for the evaluation form ranged from 4.15 to 5, and ranged from a 4.5 to 5 for four-year goals. Individual selectmen's scores ranged from a low of 4.15 to a high of a perfect 5.0. Again, I would like to acknowledge and thank you for the level of depth and detail in your self-evaluation. Mr. Holstrom provided a detailed report, which addressed each of the four goals and subjects of the evaluation report. Mrs. Brotherton provided comments acknowledging your professionalism and enthusiasm. Julie, I'm pleased to share with you an overall performance review score of 4.62. As you know, I have scheduled your evaluation for the April 8, 2013 Board of Selectmen's meeting. I am sure I speak for the entire board when I say I look forward to this meeting so all members can publicly acknowledge your hard work and dedication. Congratulations on your review, and we look forward to working with you as we move into year three of your vision for the town of Auburn. Best regards, Doreen Goodrich, Chairman. Congratulations. So we have the individual evaluations and member comments. I don't know who wants to start. Mr. Grossman.
I'll start. I gave the town manager the lowest score, and it's not because of her performance. The, one part of the evaluation includes items or questions that are personnel-related. And unfairly, they should not have been in the, in my estimation, should not have been in the review of her annual review. If, if I had changed that because of the personnel issue on answering, which is, first of all, personnel issues can't be discussed, it leads us open to, to legal issues and so on. And only can be discussed with, with, directly with the individuals should there be a problem. If we were, if I were to change those, I would have been somewhere around a 4.6, a 4.65 in my evaluations. But one was concerning the open direction, the suggestion by board members, I gave her a satisfactory on staff, department, and development relationships, recruiting, appointing, training, evaluating personnel effectively. I gave her satisfactory, and that's mainly because of personnel issues. And on the community relations, interacts positively, positively with the public, responding to questions and requests in a timely fashion, constructive manner, I felt that it was just satisfactory and not exceptional. So, as I said, rather than to change my report, I wanted to explain that the reason that my look, my rating was low was because of the personnel issues, and that had I changed it, I would have been around 4, 6, 5.
Thank you, Mr. Grossman. Mr. Holstrom, and then Mr. Simonian.
First, let me say, I found that the evaluation process to be extremely time-consuming, and in my opinion, probably not the most efficient use of the town manager's time and efforts. I'd like to see the process streamlined in the future. That being said, under the town manager's leadership and direction, Auburn's government has successfully made the transition from the town administrator form of government to the town manager form, as dictated by the amended town charter, and she has effectively and economically streamlined operations. Many of the Board of Selectmen responsibilities have dramatically changed, with the town manager now responsible for all department operations, hiring, firing, discipline, and promotion. The board has moved to a policymaking function, which is not an easy task for the board or for the manager. The manager has worked hard to keep the board adequately notified of issues and events that affect the town residents, and has presented options and opinions that are in the best interests of the town to the board. Discussions that I have had and suggestions offered have been well-received and offer the manager insight into the residents' opinions and concerns. The town manager and her staff have implemented financial policies that were adopted by the Board of Selectmen. These policies have made the budget process an effective, cumulative, and agreeable process to town departments, town administration, and the Finance Committee, and a report given by the auditor tonight confirmed that. I would like to see the town manager advocate a little more for the town departments regarding facility and equipment needs and additional personnel where required. Excess levy and the town's ability to pay more should be closely studied, and the OPEP requirement funded, but not at the expense of future growth of the town. In addition to overseeing the town budget process, the town manager and her team have pursued and have been awarded many grants offered. The town manager works closely with the local Chamber of Commerce and is very active in the Massachusetts Municipal Association. She continues to meet with the Business Roundtable. Results of economic development efforts that the town manager has actively participated in has been positive, with the town of Auburn welcoming several new businesses to town, several expansionses, several expansions to businesses, and several proposed developments are being sought. To summarize, in two short years, due to the revised town charter, there have been significant changes to town operations, and the town manager has approached the transition professionally and effectively. Through her efforts, the town has operations streamlined, they're economically and fiscally responsible, with significant cost savings realized in several areas. There's been no hesitation that she approached the Board of Selectmen with matters that are of concern or in the best interests of the town. Appointments that the town manager is now responsible for have provided boards and committees with responsible and experienced individuals. She continues to strive for progress and excellence in efficient and progressive town management, which benefits, benefits us all as town residents. To Julie, my sincerest thanks, and to her team for the town of Auburn forward, moving the town of Auburn forward expeditiously and responsibly. Thank you.
Mr. Simonian.
Yeah. So you mentioned that myself and Mr. Grossman didn't put any comments, and it's very simple. I, I plan to make my comments here and-
Oh, it wasn't a criticism, it was just a statement to her.
No, 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 no. I'm just, I'm just pointing out the reason why I didn't.
And you did last year.
And last year, last year, it seemed like it sort of dragged on and on, so I, because reading those exact comments. My evaluation of the town manager this year certainly improved, and that's to be expected, I think. You know, year one was brand new. There were some things that I absolutely thought could have been done better. And I'm, I'm happy to say that some of those things definitely did improve. At the same time, I, I think, I think I wound up somewhere in the middle of everybody. I, I still feel that, you know, there's always room for improvement. And, you know, I don't, I, I don't think I've ever seen anybody in any business I've ever worked in receive perfect scores on an evaluation, because that indicates that there is absolutely no room for improvement. So my, my feeling is, that, that would be pretty tough. We have acknowledged over the course of the last year, since we sat here and did the previous review, that there are concerns and issues in the town. And granted, the town manager and her staff have done a great job acknowledging what we've been up against. And, you know, it's, it's like the, I guess the best way to say it is, we can try to make it as perfect as we want, there'll always be things that need to be improved. And, and we focus our attention, the town manager focuses our attention on doing those things, and I realize it's a, it's a large task. It's never, it will never be complete, I guess is the best way to say it. it will never be complete, I guess, is the best way to say it. You put your effort, you put your work into it every day, and it still continues to evolve and present new challenges, and those have been acknowledged. And that's the reason why my evaluation improved from last year. I've seen those things. I've seen the effort in a lot of those areas, but we always have room to improve and move forward, and challenges that have to be tackled. The last thing I would say, and this is not a criticism in any way, shape, or form, through the chair to Mr. Holstrom, at least a couple occasions, you've mentioned the length of this, and I would just say that before we consider trying to shorten this any... most evaluations that I have ever been a part of, whether I have had to provide input to someone I reported to, or I have had to evaluate my professional staff, those have been a year-long process, and I certainly have done that in coming here tonight. This wasn't... I got the sheet, and I sat down one night and said, "Hmm, what do I think I want to give the Town Manager on this?" That's not been the case. I have taken notes at every single meeting. I have had discussions on specific events with the Town Manager, and I have noted each of those along the way, and that is how I arrived at this culmination of 12 months of my effort. This was not taken lightly by me, and I think that it deserves to be a lengthy process. I think that to shorten this would not do justice to the Town Manager, because I think that in shortening this or trying to, you know, remove some of the things that we think take too long, we could certainly do a disservice and not properly evaluate her. That's just my opinion. It's not a criticism of your comment. I just feel that the law... somewhere in between writing something that's a dissertation and something of this length certainly evaluates the Town Manager, and all of the aspects that were brought to the table by this Board when we first hired her, we each provided a list individually of each other, and many of those things were incorporated, especially the ones that all five of us agreed on. And while nothing is ever carved in stone, and there certainly can be room for improvement and change, I don't think that shortening it does a service to the Town Manager, because I do think we could miss something that ultimately, you know, wouldn't be fair to her to evaluate her on. So, just my thought on that.
And we're going to come back to that on the next agenda item, so... Mrs. Brotherton, are you prepared to go?
Boy, did I do things different. I evaluated the Town Manager on how I have seen her correspond to other department heads, to the Board, how she has kept us in the loop of everything that transpires throughout the town. I've heard nothing but positive on how she represents the business community, how she's always looking to make it better, the department's better, the roads better, and she got a 5 from me, right across the board. I have never worked with a woman more professional and so dedicated to a job, a very difficult job, than I have with Ms. Jacobson. The other thing is, I think it's clearly obvious when reviewing... I know Mr. Simonian has some great points, Mr. Holstrom has some great points, and I just wanted to... I gave Mrs. Jacobson a superb on her staff and development. No, I did not go into her office as the chair indicated, how many of us went into the office. I didn't. I did not interpret that question that way. I, for some reason, I was interpreting it as how she gets along with the department heads. So, my thought was, well, let's see, if the department heads have a problem, who are they going to come to? I'm thinking the Board of Selectmen. We haven't had any complaints. We haven't had any complaints, and that's how I based that opinion. I feel... and actually, I will read my shorthand. It's in here. "In review of Ms. Jacobson's evaluation, I feel as though her professionalism, her enthusiasm, has been nothing short of distinguished. Her professionalism has allowed her to work with all of the town's management to conducively work well together. Ms. Jacobson's commitment in working with the roundtable businesses, round business managers, has allowed to serve our current and to welcome future businesses to relocate here. I look forward to working with Ms. Jacobson over the next year to continue our improved community. Respectfully, Denise Brotherton." And I have no complaints for the Town Manager.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, I did prepare my comments as well for Town Manager Julie Jacobson's 2012 evaluation. Once again, I'd like to note the level of depth and detail in Ms. Jacobson's self-evaluation. This detailed information was helpful in properly evaluating, completing the evaluation. First, I would like to comment on the four goals. The updated Personnel Manual... Personnel Policy Manual ensures consistency, accountability, and clear expectations for town employees. Well, I'd just like to say, because I brought a prop, we went from nothing, no written personnel policies, to a complete book of personnel policies. So, you talk about distinguished. To me, when you create a document like this for one of your goals, that's perfection. There's nothing else you could have done. The Bylaw Review Committee was an immense undertaking. I appreciate the Town Manager's timeline and look forward to the continued review by the committee and pub... by the committee and public, and the adoption of these updated bylaws by town meeting. On the third goal, working with CFO, the Town Manager... working with the CFO, the Town Manager has done incredible work in the bond rating area. The tour and presentation to Moody's allowed the town to maintain its current bond rating and better familiarize the analysts with Auburn. I'm confident that the Town Manager and CFO will continue to work to strengthen and hopefully improve the town's bond rating. And the fourth goal was the quarterly reports, which the Manager provided to the Board as required. Regarding the evaluation form and the different categories, the relationship with Board of Selectmen. Ms. Jacobson has always been available for Board of Selectmen, concerns, comments, and questions. She has provided hundreds of email updates as well as telephone communications. She has given Board members guidance to ensure an issue before the Board does not expose the town to liability. Regarding staff and departmental relationships, Ms. Jacobson has handled several difficult personnel issues. She is professional and well-versed in mass general law related to personnel issues. She keeps the Board informed to the extent allowed. Ms. Jacobson holds regular staff meeting and appears to have the respect and commitment to excellence by all department leaders. Budget and finance, that's, I think, pretty much goes without saying. Ms. Jacobson continues to work closely with CFO Ed Casanovaich and excels in this area. Town administration. Ms. Jacobson is well-versed in mass general law, the Town Charter, bylaws, and votes of the Board of Selectmen. She manages the day-to-day operation of the town while balancing the interests of all. Ms. Jacobson has always worked long days, nights, and weekends, and I'm sure many of you in this room have received an email from her at midnight, and then another one at 5:00 in the morning, and on Sunday afternoon, Sunday morning. She doesn't expect us to respond, but she's doing the job. Community relations. Ms. Jacobson is responsive to resident inquiries. The quarterly newsletter, Code Red, and public service announcements are all used to inform the public when needed. Ms. Jacobson works closely with the Economic Development Committee and the Business Roundtable to promote appropriate commercial growth. I believe in an evaluation that if you have a rating of needs improvement to distinguished, you should be willing to give that distinguished if they earn that, because we set the goals, we'll set different goals annually, and the goals that you focused on this year, you excelled. The goals that we set a week ago, I expect that you will excel, and I'm pleased to offer an overall score of 4.8. I also have, and I would like to acknowledge how many department heads and town employees are here in support of Ms. Jacobson's evaluation tonight, but I'd also like to read these two letters into the record. It was sent to Ms. Jacobson, but it was also CC'd to me, so I'm going to read it. "Hello, Julie. I just wanted to let you know that unfortunately, I will not be able to come to the Board of Selectmen meeting tomorrow night for your performance review. I was asked several months ago by the Fire District to do a presentation on customer service, and it is scheduled for tomorrow night. Otherwise, I would have loved to have been there to hear what I am sure will be great scores. I just wanted to thank you for your outstanding leadership and the support that you provide to me and the department. I can't express enough how much it is appreciated and recognized not only by me, but by my staff. Again, sorry, if I could be there, I would be in the front row as a sign of support to you, for you, and the great job you are doing for this community. Good luck, and I will talk to you soon. Thanks," and it's signed by Fire Chief Stephen Coleman." And I have one other that didn't go to Ms. Jacobson that came to the... Dear Madam Chair and members of the Board of Selectmen. It was my intent to appear in person this evening to show my strong support of our Town Manager, Mrs. Julie Jacobson. However, I am unable to attend due to the fact that my son, who was out of school all last week due to illness, was kind enough to share his illness with me. During the past two years, Mrs. Jacobson has worked very hard to forge a partnership with the Auburn Police Department. I have found her to be responsive to the needs of the police department while keeping in mind that we, as a town, have a budget that we must live within. Mrs. Jacobson has made herself available any time I have needed to speak with her, regardless if it is after hours, on a weekend, or even on a holiday for that matter. She has preached open two-way communication at her monthly department head meetings and leads by example. I have worked with Town Managers in other communities, and I have personally served on two Town Manager Search Committees, and I say with all sincerity that Ms. Jacobson is a true professional, and we are fortunate to have her here in Auburn. If I had the opportunity to participate in her evaluation process, I would rate her performance close to, if not at the top of any rating scale. Hopefully, I will have an opportunity to continue to work with Mrs. Jacobson for many years to come. I would like to thank you for allowing me to voice my support for Mrs. Jacobson. Respectfully, Andrew J. Slukas, Chief of Police." Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I just... I want to just address the Board for a minute, and I just... I have to say that you're probably all very excited that I got my evaluation down from 24 pages last year, or 16 this year, so it's improving.
That's part of the reason why.
And what I should have said, and, you know, in trying to be somewhat concise, and as many of you know, I'm not very good at being concise. I tend to go on a little bit, but I was trying to be concise in my responses, and what I should have said, because a couple of the members did, that was if I received a 3 in a couple of areas, it was in the same area, which I noticed, which is communication with residents and businesses. So, what I probably should have put in there, and I will certainly put in in the future if it makes a difference, is on the communication side. For what it's worth, I just want you to know, I've received and sent out probably about 24,000 emails. 2,000 directly coming into the Town Manager account, and those are residents. Every single one of them is a separate complaint or concern or question. Every single one of them, in addition to about 4,000, 4,000 to 6,000 other calls and emails that are logged, have been responded to either by myself or our department heads. I think we pride ourselves on being responsive, and we'll continue to do that, and I apologize that I should have put that figure in it, and clearly I can see where that was a concern of some of the Board members, so I just want to let you know. I continue to make sure that we respond appropriately and in a timely manner. So, I want to, first of all, thank you for the valuable feedback and the comments that were provided this evening during the evaluation process, and also to the Board for your support throughout the year, and the ability to work collaboratively on behalf of the residents, the businesses, the taxpayers of Auburn, and just to do what we all can as a whole to benefit this great community. It is an honor to serve as Town Manager. I said that last year, and I continue to say that this year, and it's an honor to work with the Board of Selectmen in identifying the priorities and establishing goals that we've collectively worked to achieve. With the leadership of the Board and the support of all of you, Town Administration collectively was able to accomplish many critical goals that I won't go through, but if anyone cares, some nighttime reading, they're in the 16-page report of some of the things that we did, and I think we can all be so proud of that. It benefits the community at large, and really, it enhances the quality of life for our residents, and that's what it's all about. It's about providing quality services and making this a great place to live. The past year, as my second as Town Manager, was still exciting. It was still productive. We still... we did a lot of reforms, strategies, everything designed to enhance the delivery of services to the public, to maximize our resource, and to strengthen our internal operations. We developed and implemented many initiatives and projects that did improve the delivery of services, created efficiencies in the operation of town government, and strengthened the financial position of the town, as you heard this evening from our independent auditor. These accomplishments were achieved through the hard work of all the town employees, and notably through the diligence and commitment of the management team. Therefore, I want to recognize and thank every single department head, division head... don't worry, I'm not reading all of the employees as well, but I want to publicly state that every single employee in this town leads to the success of this town. And the wonderful comments and the feedback that I received from the Board tonight isn't my feedback, it isn't my accomplishment, it's all of ours. We do this together, and if we didn't have such a great team, and we didn't have such great employees, I wouldn't be so fortunate to have such nice comments from all of you. So, I want to make sure that the employees know every single person matters. It's, you know, everybody has a role in it. It's a machine that works, and if any one piece is out of sync, the machine isn't going to work. And we work really hard to make sure that all those pieces work together. I do want to say, again, while you're evaluating me, my scores reflect their accomplishments, so I just want to make sure I note them. And again, while I can't thank every employee individually, I do really want to thank and mention the management team, so indulge me for a moment, because I think it's really important. I try to say on a daily basis, and people who know me, I try to send emails constantly telling people, "Thank you, great job." I think it's important to motivate them, because at the same time, if something needs to be done, you have to say, you know, "We got to fix this, we have to tweak this," but I think the most important thing you can do is publicly thank the people who do the job. And I want to thank, first, Ed Casanovaich, the Assistant Town Manager and CFO, who does a tremendous job every day. He's a true asset to the town. He's a great colleague. I couldn't ask for anyone better to work with, and I would tell you that there's no better Assistant Town Manager or CFO anywhere in the Commonwealth. And even to hear the gentleman tonight from the auditing firm, Independent, say that Auburn is one of two communities who've done something in the state, or one of 10 out of 100 that have done something. Ed has that vision, and he's been able to maintain the financial stability of this town, and he's just... he's a pleasure to work with. He's funny occasionally, too, which makes it good.
At whose expense.
Sense of humor is important. Bill Coyle, our DPW Director, is, again, he's incredibly talented. He's done yeoman's work in managing a new Public Works Department, certainly not an easy job, developing new policies and procedures, again, where there were none, there was no department, so everything had to be done from scratch, and providing excellent service to the community, much of which we've seen throughout the past year in all the different weather conditions. So, he and his staff continue to provide the services to the town. Look at the snowstorms we've had. Look at the weather conditions we've had. Chief Steve Coleman continues to demonstrate a strong leadership and diverse management skills as he leads our Fire Department, and it's extremely talented and professional employees. It's a great department. Chief Andrew Slukas has and continues to provide excellent leadership and direction for our tremendous Police Department, addressing challenging operational administrative issues with professionalism and efficiency, and we should be proud of DPW, Police, Fire, and all of their staff. Adam Burney, the Acting Director of Development and Inspeccional Services, has worked diligently to manage and wear many hats, the responsibilities of his department, and to put policies and procedures into place so we can provide quality services to the community. That office takes a lot of... client... door traffic that comes in that needs to be addressed and handled on a daily basis constantly, and he's done a great job of getting some systems in place to allow us to provide those services to the community. He also led the town's Green Community Effort, which is just a major undertaking. And Bill Waterman, the Director of Information Technology, he continues to do an outstanding job of updating our technology and maintaining critical communication systems. That really is the backbone of our daily operations, and without communication... That really is the backbone of our daily operations, and without communications, especially myself, I wouldn't survive too long if I didn't have email, so Bill does a great job with that. And I want to thank and recognize the division heads. Nick Antonovico, Wayne Blumquist, Andy Palatier, Larry Corben, Cindy Cosgrove, Deb Dubois, Kenny Fairbanks, Roger Bellhumer, Chris Hugo, Terry Loex, Jeff Mitchell, Diane Ramsey, Deb Tarian, and Sherwood Westerman. And I apologize if I may have left someone out, I think I got everybody. I just want to thank them for their hard work every day throughout the year, and really for the effective management of their divisions. We get a lot of comments that come in from the public, which is unusual, as everyone knows, it's more common to get a comment when it's a complaint or a concern, but we get so many compliments in from the residents of this community for the services we provide. People have actually taken the time to send us emails or calls or notes thanking them, and it's because of all of you that we get those comments. I also want to thank all of the clerical staff for all the work that they provide to the departments, but in particular, and not just because they're sitting here, which they may think that, but in particular, I want to thank Sharon Kwiatowski, Sue Strazina, and Patsy Buregard for the work that they do in my office every day, as well as for the Board of Selectmen, and I don't want to speak for you, but for me, it's incredible, the volume of calls, people, drop-ins, concerns, complaints, paperwork that comes through that office, they keep it ticking, they do it with a smile, and they make it a pleasure to come in every day. Lastly, I want to thank the board and commission members who serve this community, because without them, we wouldn't be able to accomplish a lot of what we did. We need volunteers, and I guess it's my, my way of pitching again that we need volunteers. We need people to put applications in and to keep volunteering for this community, whether you're on a regulatory board or an advisory board, and some of which our committee members are here tonight. So I just want to thank you, again, to the board, for your professional evaluation process, your thoughtful assessment, your comments this evening, and throughout the year. Again, encourage you, please, if you ever have any questions, ever have any concerns, my door is open, I'm always willing to talk, as the chair said, pretty much 24/7. Occasionally, I sleep, but I'll answer a phone pretty much at any time. And I'm honored to serve the community as town manager, and I truly do look forward to serving you in the coming years. Thank you very much.
Anyone else has anything else? Well, thank you. Well deserved.
Thank you very much.
Well deserved. Which leads us into our next agenda item, which is the Town Manager Evaluation Form. At our last meeting, the board took a vote on the town manager's goals. We had discussion on the Town Manager Evaluation Form, and as the clock ticked, and we had several people waiting for hearings, and there appeared to be more discussion needed on this item, we held it for this week. So I will open it up to comments on this item. Mr. Holstrom?
Yeah. As I mentioned during the evaluation process, I think that the, it was a long, drawn-out affair. I think it was well done, and I think she deserves everything that was, all the comments made tonight. However, again, with the charter being revised as it has, the evaluation process, I think, should be revised also. During the evaluation, I looked at the goals. The goals, isn't anything that I had derived, because I was a new member on the board, so I followed along with what the goals were and followed along, and that's how I evaluated her. Not on what I thought should be done, or what should need to be done, it's the goals that were put in front of me, and the goals were finalized and completed well. And what I like to do is, because the responsibilities of this board has changed, I will go along with what my comments were from our last meeting here, that we began discussion on it. This Section B, Staff and Departmental Regulations, should be gone. Now the purview of the town manager to handle all of negotiations or contracts, and also personnel issues. Yes, we are involved in negotiations or contracts, she keeps us informed of what's going on, but all in all, that is not our responsibility. She does keep us informed of it, and I think because of the revision in the charter, that our responsibility has gone away. I think we should get rid of Section B altogether.
Are there any other comments? Mr. Simonian, here's the end of first.
I'm going to reiterate my comments regarding Section B as well. I think this section is necessary. Again, this is not us doing this, this is our evaluation, which is our responsibility of the town manager. The town manager is now responsible for collective bargaining, absolutely. We don't do that. But I do believe that it is our responsibility to evaluate that as a skill. That was an important skill, and going back to the original interview process and the several candidates, that was a question that was asked repeatedly. Collective bargaining was an issue that was very important to the board. Again, we're not getting involved in the process, we're evaluating the ability of the town manager to bargain on behalf of the town. And it's the same case with the other four items in that section. Mr. Grossman had brought up a couple of points, and it became clear when we discussed this that we were not, we all know that we're not involved in personnel issues anymore, but certainly, as I said, my evaluation process isn't when I'm handed this sheet. It's, there's, I think, about 20 items on here, and if I truly, in my opinion, want to effectively evaluate the town manager, then that evaluation shouldn't be done in a matter of a couple of weeks. It should be my collective evaluation of that entire 12-month period, because if I wait until the end, I guarantee you, there are going to be things that I would forget or miss. So this, this really is just kind of a boilerplate to an evaluation. This is not us asking to be involved in the things that are her responsibility. This is us evaluating her ability to accomplish those things. So I don't, I don't see why we would want to take this out. These are important skills that any town manager should have.
Mr. Grossman next?
Yes, I just want to reiterate, Mr. Holstrom has made the comment, I made it before when I gave my evaluation. I feel that the staff and departmental relationships are too close to being personnel issues, and that that Section B in the comments of the review should be removed.
Did you have anything else, Mr. Grossman? Okay, so I'll just comment on, on Section B, Staff and Departmental Regulations, Relationships, I'm sorry. I, I agree in needing to evaluate the manager properly, but I also feel that Section 1, Relationships with the Board of Selectmen, number one, keeps board members informed on the issues, needs, and significant incidents of town departments, really, you know, handles a couple of those issues in there. And regarding collective bargaining, I mean, I believe Section 2 of that offers professional advice on the issues requiring Board of Selectmen action with appropriate recommendation. A board member could evaluate it under that section. We would still, if we eliminated Section B, we would still have 15 items that we're evaluating the manager on, and the four goals. I certainly think 19 items that we are evaluating on is certainly a thorough evaluation. And as I said in the past, you know, even with some questions regarding, you know, recruits, appoints, trains, and evaluates personnel effectively, there were, there were issues that came up last year in the hiring process that the manager just couldn't give us the detail on, and what I would have liked to have seen, maybe a more hurried There were issues that this board couldn't be aware of, and I just had to accept that and have now, now understand the process. So I would agree that we're on a fine line here of personnel issues, which would expose the town, and evaluating the manager on staff and departmental relationship. So I would agree that with 15 items and four additional goals, certainly we have an adequate evaluation form to evaluate the manager on. Mr. Holstrom, then Mr. Simonian.
Okay. First off, I think that with Section B gone, it goes along with revised charter saying, the town manager does keep us informed of all of what's going on in town. We're not going to be micromanagers here. We are an overseer of the departments, of the town manager's department. And she offers professional advice to us, and recommendations as needed, and she's open to direction suggestions by board members, and that's, that's an open door. That gives us, you know, anything that she can bring to us that we can discuss and talk about. So I don't think that we have to fine-tune anything with Section B, so I would recommend that Section B be gone, and I would make the motion that we delete Section B its entirety.
You all still have an opportunity to speak, Mr. Simonian. Is there a second on that motion?
Second.
Mr. Simonian?
Yeah, I'm through the chair to Mr. Grossman. I, I guess I'm a little perplexed, because two weeks ago, you advocated for keeping this section in, so.
I didn't until it was explained to me that the related personnel.
Could I finish?
Sure.
I'd just like you to walk me through your thought process that got you to change your mind, because maybe there's something I missed.
And I would just, I'm going to jump in here as chairman. I would just caution Mr. Grossman on any conversations, just be careful of that line of personnel, that gave a clear conversation with the manager, that gave a clearer understanding of personnel issues. We need to be careful not to expose any personnel issues.
I've said that before, and I'll say it again, that they're too closely related to issues that can be personnel issues, which lead us to, to legal suits and so on. Information that's not available to us as a result of that, and therefore, that's why when it was all explained to me after I had done my, my rating and so on, that I explained this evening what my rating would have been had I realized that this information couldn't be given.
Mr. Simonian, then Mrs. Brotherton.
Just the, the five things in here are, are essential skillsets that I would expect any person in a CEO-type position to have. I cannot fathom any reason why we would not want to evaluate a town manager on their ability to bargain on behalf of the town. That makes no sense to me. To solicit participation of appropriate staff members and department heads in planning and implementing policy. Why we wouldn't want to evaluate on that, I can't fathom, because I have never in my life worked for a corporation where department heads, even down to senior management, had to provide a detailed plan that was essentially, that was continuously rolled up to the CEO, because it is impossible on a daily basis for a CEO-type position to understand what is going on in every single department. That is why you rely on your department heads to provide you that information, whether it's in a weekly, bi-monthly report, whatever it is. And this is, this is the kind of thing that I was talking about, where I think we do a disservice, because it would certainly, for me, leave certain, many things open to interpretation if this section were removed. How, how can I understand if that communication with department heads is going on if I don't have a specific thing to evaluate the town manager on? Works with department heads and staff to promote effective and problem-solving. Why, why wouldn't we want to make sure that that's going on? If there is, if there is an environment where issues are being raised, and there's no, or things are happening that create concerns, create issues, and I've experienced this, where members of my staff have felt that, you know, well, you know, I know the boss has a lot going on, maybe I should, this is something I should just kind of, you know, let it slide. And if you let enough small problems slide, they turn into big problems. So the ability to promote that communication piece with the department heads where that's going on, I think is also, also should be evaluated, because a communication breakdown certainly is, could be catastrophic. Recruits, appoints, trains, evaluates personnel effectively. I would say, if anything, I would take the word recruit out, that probably doesn't make a lot of sense, but we've spoken several times over the course of the last year about the, the training, and the town manager herself has, you know, stated how proud she is of the training that has been implemented since she's here, and I think that has been great. If I, there's nothing else in this that really speaks to that part of what she's done. If you take that out, again, that's a disservice. I can't evaluate her on, on some of the training that has been done that wasn't being done previously. So, and then exercises leadership in creating a climate that provides challenges to employees. That's almost, I mean, I mean, that almost is, is just a no-brainer of, that's the kind of climate, if you have a climate where people are afraid to go to their supervisor, or a chain of command has to work in both directions, or it doesn't work. There has to be comfort in going up the chain as well as down the chain to communicate, no matter what it is. And any breakdown in that chain of communication certainly hinders the ability to do the job on a daily basis. So I think that each of those things specifically has merit, and again, removing those five things removes five vital things that the town manager does, or relies on people on her staff to help her accomplish, and to not evaluate her on those, I don't think is fair to her.
Mrs. Brotherton, I said you could go next.
Excuse me. I agree with Mr. Holstrom, but I also agree with Mr. Simonian. I think there are some key points in here that allowed me actually to rate Mrs. Jacobson as I did. As I had stated, we've had no department heads come to us with any complaints, and that's how I rated that, because if they have an issue with Ms. Jacobson, who do they go to? I'm assuming they would come to the Board of Selectmen, unless I'm wrong. Do I stand corrected on that?
I would believe they would go to the, I'm sorry, I would believe they would, if they didn't have, if they didn't want to go to the town manager, they could certainly have a dialogue with the assistant town manager, but we don't, under the charter, we don't have, we don't, we are not involved in the day-to-day operation of municipal employees. You know, I'm, I don't want to, I don't want to go off too much on my points, but, but we, we don't, we don't have the authority to address, you know, there's a personnel policy which, which addresses policies and procedures. We're not involved in personnel issues.
Okay. Okay. I went over the charter, and I find, and I do, I agree with all sides here. I'm wondering, did I find it lengthy? I really did not find this lengthy at all. I was able to read through these statements, and that's how I read them, and each of the bulletproof things here. My concern is, maybe if we were to take another look at this Section B, and maybe come down to one or two statements that we can add into another statement, because I think some of these are very important. I really do.
Could you be specific?
Negotiating the collective bargaining, that, that basically is included in the top, that she does keep us informed in those issues. Solicits participation, yeah, see, there's some of these, I'll be honest with you, Madam Chair, I wish I had, like, another week to do this, because I've been thinking about this ever since two weeks ago.
Well, I'll just say, you know, solicits participation of appropriate staff members and department heads in planning and implementing policy, that's getting involved in the day-to-day operation of the management of the town, and, you know, the charter has changed, the Board of Selectmen is not involved in the day-to-day operation of the town. Works with department heads and staff to promote effective and prompt problem-solving and conflict resolution. Again, we would have to be here and be involved in the day-to-day operation and, and observing, observing town employees to see how they handle the situation. Otherwise, as I said at our last meeting, we would have to sit down with the town manager and say, okay, who, who did you bring into a meeting today, and what did you, you know, what came? what came out of that meeting for policies or procedures?
This, that, again, that's part of the day-to-day operation.
But once again, excuse me, Madam Chair, once again, I apologize, but one example I have is we've had a northern resident, resident come to the board numerous times regarding some issues on Route 12 with, with trucks and, and problems there, speed limit and stuff like that. And I was able to answer that comfortably because Mrs. Jacobson has come back and indicated who she has gotten involved with that. So we do see some resolution to a conflict or we see what she has done.
But this is with staff and department. That would be more with community relations. That would fall under Section E. If it's a resident coming in with a concern, however she got to, however she got to the resolution or whoever she brought in to resolve the issue, it would be interacts positively with the public, responds to questions which was raised.
Okay. Okay, fair enough.
This, this is specific to staff and departmental relationships. Did Mr. Holstrom have his hand up and then Mr. Simonean?
Again, I'll stay with what I wanted to do in the beginning is to get rid of Section B altogether, I think. Relationship with the Board of Selectmen, I have the trust and the confidence in the town manager and her leadership of the town right now and what we've seen with reports, I think we can get rid of Section B altogether. If you want to rate her on that, that's great because it opens suggestions by the board members. She provides liaison to the town council, so she keeps us involved in what she goes to. She offers professional advice to us on all of aspects of what's going on. So if we're trying to look at personnel issues and negotiations, we should not be doing that. The charter says no. Section B says, let's get rid of that one. And I'll move that question.
I, I just, I had already told Mr. Simonean I would recognize him and Mrs. Jacobson as part of this process is supposed to be involved in the setting of her goals and evaluation.
I will withdraw that.
Thank you. Mr. Simonean?
Yeah, I.
I mean, we won't go on forever, Mr. Holstrom, but I'll address Mr. Simonean.
Thank you.
And then let the manager have the last word, then we'll call the vote.
Mrs. Brotherton raised some good points and I don't think that these fit neatly into the other categories. And we discussed this several times initially. And these were all items that, again, I don't see how evaluating the town manager on her ability or, and, and you know what, let me stop myself right there because I don't want to make this about one person. This evaluation will be done of any town manager from now till whenever. So, so let me put it in this perspective. I don't see how evaluating any town manager on their ability to bargain on behalf of the town is a bad thing. This, this is, this was one of the skillsets that we all deemed important during the hiring process. We asked several questions of all the candidates regarding collective bargaining, asked them to give us detailed their experience with collective bargaining because of the fact that it was no longer a function of the Board of Selectmen. So why, two years later, we would want to throw that out? It doesn't make sense. And again, none of this is asking us to get involved in personnel issues. I stated it two weeks ago, I'll state it again. I have no desire to understand or have any knowledge of what is going on with personnel. But I will say that when issues have arisen, and to Mrs. Brotherton's point, I agree, when situations have arisen, the town manager has talked to me to the extent that she was able to without infringing upon those people's rights to just inform me that there was an issue and it's being handled. No names, no anything. And I believe that, that those conversations absolutely allowed me to, as Mr. Brotherton said, evaluate this part of it. Again, that is the skillset I would ask, I would expect any CEO-type person to have. And I just think to remove it, again, it, we, we take, we take out things and, and we roll them into other things and, and we asked specifically, we all felt that there was a training deficiency two years ago. We specifically mentioned that. Town managers made strides toward putting training into place, making sure that new employees had the proper training and still pursuing other avenues to, to, to train. And we're just going to throw that out? How is that fair to her or any town manager that continues to evolve a training process? I, I don't, I don't see that. You're, you're saying, well, that accomplishment among all your others really doesn't matter to us. I don't think that's fair.
Through the chair. From my perspective, the hardest part for me as far as preparing the report for you did happen to be this section. As you can probably see from the report, some of the, some of my responses to some of these questions were very short and concise because I can't give you the information that I believe it's asking for by law. I mean, there are public records laws, there are privacy laws. So the particular areas that I can point to that I had, that I struggled with to report to you on what I did, under recruits, appoints, trains and evaluates, I can tell you that we have a system in place now for performance evaluation. We have training in place, I can tell you that. But I can't specifically tell you the issues as they relate to the recruitment or the, the actual evaluation of certain personnel. And as Mr. Grossman said, we, we had a conversation about this. I showed him in the public records law as well as Mass General law, some of the areas that clearly protect public employees from having that discussion. So I struggle with reporting to you. So it's hard for me to report to you particularly on that one, other than in very generic terms. As Mr. Simonean said, I do try to give you information on specific employee issues as best I can. To, to me, that fell under number A1, which is keeping board members informed of the issues, needs and significant incidents of the town. That's where I, I feel that I'm addressing that. But that's, again, that's my opinion. On the collective bargaining, again, there's, there's, I can tell you about collective bargaining processes that are complete, but as you know, we can only discuss ongoing collective bargaining in executive session. So that one was a little bit of a struggle because we weren't in executive session on many of them. I didn't, it wasn't that bad this time. Reporting because we had successfully impact bargained and I was able to report on that. But unless a collective bargaining process is over, I can't tell you what that was. For instance, where there were a number of grievances, I can't tell you what they were. I can tell you they were resolved, but does that help you make a decision? There was a grievance, it was resolved. There was a grievance, the town won. And that's pretty much all I can say. So I can't give you the details on the collective bargaining that personally I felt I should give you. That, that area is a little, little bit of a struggle, depending on what stage in the collective bargaining process we're in. Solicits participation of appropriate staff members and department heads. I mean, I can, I can tell you how we do it as, as Mr. Simonean said, I can report that we have monthly meetings and weekly meetings and, but that's consistent. That's, that's not specific to what I think you're looking for. I felt like I was just repeating myself, saying, yes, we have monthly meetings, yes, I solicit their participation. I didn't think what I was giving you on that section, I felt like I wasn't giving you valuable information because a lot of what I solicit and how I incentivize them is through the evaluation process, setting their goals, evaluating them and their goals, and I can't report that. So I guess that's where I struggled the most with Part B. I, I recognize that you want to see leadership in collective bargaining, you know, I fully understand that and I know you want me to have a good relationship with the staff. I want to have a good relationship. I guess it's some of the, some of the issues in here are hard for me to report on. So from my perspective, those were the areas that I struggled with, you know, of the, of the 16-page report, I'd say three of the five here I struggled with, maybe two were easier.
Last comment, Mr. Simonean?
Yeah, I just, one final comment. Given what the town manager said, I, I would ask this board to, for, for us to spend some time possibly revamping this rather than just throw it out. And the comment about evaluating personnel is well taken. And from my perspective, what I, what, I remember from the conversations that went on about this, it wasn't, again, I don't want to know how you evaluated, what, what their score was or anything like that. But I do know that prior, when, when I first cut on this board, there was, I, I asked what the evaluation process was and, and never got an answer. So to me, the fact that the evaluation process now is in place and continues to be done is, is really what I'm looking for there. Not, again, not to get involved in, I, I don't care what anyone's evaluation was. I, I, I wouldn't want to know. So rather than just throw it out, I'm asking the board to consider looking at these and revamping them in, in the, as far as collective bargaining, changing it possibly to just in, in years where we ha, where collective bargaining has to be done. I, I guess it doesn't make much sense to evaluate someone on something they don't have to do that year. And we, and it may, it probably doesn't happen every year. So rather than just throw it out, I, I think maybe we could spend some time trying to make, make it make a little more sense.
So we have a motion, a second and discussion, so I'll just move for the vote since we have a motion on the floor. So all those in favor of eliminating Section B?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. No. So it passes two to, two to nothing. I mean, two to nothing. Three to two. So that is the evaluation where we've set the goal, so we know moving forward what the basis of the evaluation is. And thank you for waiting. Next, we have the Charter Cable Television License Renewal. And all this and all you really want to do is pass it on to us to review for a next meeting. But please, if you could just introduce yourself and tell us what you're here for.
Hi, I'm Bill Shibley. I'm chairman of Auburn's Local Channel Committee. Before I comment on the process on how we negotiate the new contract with Charter, I'd like to reiterate to the citizens of Auburn that this is non-exclusive. At any time, any other company can come into town and deliver the same services. If and when this does occur, if ever, the town of Auburn, the LCC will gladly sit down and negotiate exactly the same way as we have done with Charter. Realistically, you know, because we always get the question, Verizon Fios is the most likely candidate. And unofficially, I've heard rumors that three years is probably when they're going to approach us. Now for how we negotiate the contract. This process has transpired over approximately the last 18 months. Items that we cannot negotiate are pricing and the channel lineups. These are handled by regulations from the FCC and the Mass Department of Telecommunications. There is some confusion that the town of Auburn pays to have Charter here. Like to clear that up, that they negotiate and they pay us to be here. Charter gives the town through the LCC two capital payments. Those are spaced out in the first and 50 years of the contract. These payments are used to buy equipment to broadcast programs generated by the town. Spacing these payments every five years enables us to keep up with the technologies that are constantly changing. On a yearly basis, we receive payments based on the number of subscribers we have for those services. Those payments keep the daily, day-to-day operations of the studio going, personnel, the meetings that are all covered. In addition, that also provides the, the public to use all the facilities that we have. Because in the town of Auburn, Pega Access is part of the town, we are based in the high school and that gives the, the kids the opportunity to also use these services. The town of Auburn has probably one of the best TV programs of any high school anywhere. We have about 250 kids enrolled and Jason Bergman does an awesome job teaching the We also encourage any resident, if they have any ideas for programming, to come on down and learn how to use the facilities. Back to the contract. We have met several times, the town manager and, and our attorney, Bill August. After that, we had several public ascertainment hearings. These were held to evaluate Charter's performance over the terms of the last contract. The citizens and officials all presented their comments, concerns and problems to the Charter representatives. After the hearing, Charter met one-on-one with the attendees to individually help those with problems with Charter. Charter reported back to us the results of those solutions. And other than you, Doreen, I don't know who else that hasn't been taken care of properly. We encourage residents to, to contact ACTV at 508-832-5323 for any problems or go to the town website, thatarbonguy.com, and we have a form there they can fill out. Using all the information we obtained from these meetings, we prepared several drafts and dispersed them to the town manager and the Board of Selectmen for review and comment. After the results of those, we prepared the final draft between Charter and the LCC. Tonight, we present that finished document for your review. And if there are no objections, we recommend that the Board of Selectmen sign the contract at the next meeting in two weeks.
Thank you. Do any members have any questions right now? Mr. Simonean?
I don't have a question, just a comment. I, I wanted to say thanks. I appreciate the emails and the updates and, and keeping me informed, well out in front of, of this and at the various stages to give us an opportunity a couple of months ahead of time to look at it and, and review it rather than a last-minute type of thing. So thank you for that.
Mr. Holstrom?
One question, I guess for the record. This contract put into place, how long will it be good for?
It's 10 years.
It's good for 10 years. In any time in between, I'm sorry, through the chair, but any time in between, can somebody else come in and take that contract over?
Oh, we can have as many contracts as, if 15 providers came in here to want to provide service, every one of them, you know, there, there is no monopoly here. It's non-exclusive.
And do you foresee anything else coming down the line from this point?
Oh, as I said before, I mean, there's rumors that Verizon in about three years, maybe, you know, we're on the shortlist of towns to expand into.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Grossman?
Did you mention that there's a payout in one year and five years?
Yes, we, we get that with every contract. That's, that's what keeps all this running.
Right. But, so if you have a 10-year contract.
Mm-hmm.
And three years down the road, Verizon is interested in coming in with Fios, what happens to the existing contract that's in place with Charter?
Verizon's contract would be very similar to Charter's. I mean, we have to negotiate equally with any provider that comes into town.
So there'd be a payback?
Verizon would also have to, you know, have the same rates.
So we will put this on our next agenda for a vote and I'll just ask members, if I can do this, if you can hold on to this, this is a large document, so we don't have to share and print it out again. Thank you so much for waiting.
Thank you.
Through the chair.
I'm sorry, this will be actually be done at the April 22 meeting.
Yes. There's an expectation to take a vote, yes.
And through the chair, I want to thank the committee too for all their work. This has been a very long process, the ascertainment process. They've done a lot of work getting the public involved, having hearings, responding. Chris Hugo on the, the town side has done a great job coordinating and responding to people who've had questions with Charter. And I, I also want to thank Charter for their recent presentation up at the Senior Center. I think they were able to answer a lot of questions related to their service. But just to clarify again, anyone could come in and negotiate a contract with the town for a provision of services and then the choice is up to the consumer as to what type of service they would like to purchase. It's just at the moment, Charter's the only one that's come forward and, and that is the case in many communities. So, thank you.
Thank you. The next item is the Annual Town Meeting Warrant. Encloses a draft warrant for the board's approval, subject to town council. Review. Is there a motion? Or are there any questions? We have a motion to send it to town council. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So voted. So we had discussion, the next item is a discussion and vote on permit fee and violation penalty for non-garaged, unregistered motor vehicles, trailers, boats, parts, permits. As you recall, we've recently adopted a new policy regarding non-garaged, unregistered motor vehicles. The board does need to set a, a fee and any fines for this item. Keeping in mind that a licensed applicant is required to advertise a hearing in the newspaper and notify a butters by certified mail. So they have an initial cost of close to $50, so I would hope that we don't make the fee. fee so high that it's unaffordable. Are there any comments?
So, you're saying that the application fee for an unregistered vehicle right now is approximately $50?
No, it's nothing right now because we didn't have a, we didn't have a clear policy of notification. People came in, they applied, they came in, and the Board issued a license under our new policy. We have a butter notification so that neighbors are aware that this license application is before the Board, and because it's a public hearing with a butter notification, they have to advertise. And I believe, Sharon, could you tell me the cost for advertising?
It's $35.
It's $35 for the advertising, and depending on the number of abutters, you know, you could be looking at $50 for that process. Yes, Mr. Simontian?
Do we, is there an average cost for us to prepare permit?
Administrative cost?
Administrative cost, yeah, through the chair to the Town Manager.
Through the chair. To prepare the permit, I'd say it's somewhere, maybe around two hours of clerical time just for the actual getting the permit, getting the information. It varies because sometimes people come in with an application that's incomplete, so it costs more time because then clerical has to contact the applicant, tell them they're missing information, we have to get it back. So, you know, a fair range is an hour for a complete application to three to four hours for chasing someone down. So, I'd say two is probably fair.
And this application is as detailed as other applications like a liquor license application, so. Mr. Simontian?
I move to set the fee for unregistered motor vehicle permit at $15.
$15?
Yeah, I think that's fair.
That doesn't even cover the cost of the advertising?
I thought you, hold on, then I misunderstood. I thought you said it was the person applying for the permits.
They're responsible for it, but it goes through the Town.
We pay for the advertising?
We advertise, we advertise and we notify abutters.
I misunderstood what you said. I thought you said they were responsible for the cost of the advertising.
Through the chair, the applicant ultimately pays for the advertising. But we generally, fees are established under, especially under Department of Revenue regulations to establish fees for anything. Towns are supposed to look at their direct and their indirect costs. So, if we were to just purely look at the direct, you'd be looking at two hours of clerical. That's probably a minimum of $50. You know, 50 would be close because in some cases it may be one hour, and in some cases it could be four. But 15 wouldn't cover, just through the chair, that wouldn't cover the Town's cost for the preparation and the clerical involved.
I thought the comment was that that cost was on the applicant, not us, so.
So, I guess what we're looking at is the cost to cover the advertising and a butter notification is roughly $50, so that's our starting point. And then the cost of processing the application that the Town Manager is saying could be upwards of $50, but maybe less than that. So, we're looking at, I would recommend, between $75 and $100.
If I may, is that application per one vehicle?
Yes.
So, and the bylaw only allows one unregistered vehicle per property?
It allows none.
Beg pardon?
It allows none. Everyone needs to have a permit.
That's what I'm saying. The application would be only for one, so if you had two there, you'd have to put in a second application.
Yes.
I'd make the motion and make it $75 annually.
Is there a second?
Second.
You know, and I'll address that. I know it appears to be cost prohibitive at times, but that's the cost of doing business. I mean, we have no control over the cost to advertise, a butter notification, and clerical support.
We were 75.
Is there any other discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
So, four to one. And we now need to look at a penalty for a violation for having an unregistered motor vehicle without a permit. And as you can see, some communities have $20 a day for each day of the violation. One is $50 for the first offense. Melbury has no fine. Up to $50 per violation. $10 per day per vehicle. Mr. Simontian?
My question is this. In the case of whether it's $20 a day, $50 a day, $100 for the first offense, if, what is our recourse if someone doesn't remove the vehicle and doesn't pay the fine?
The Auburn Police are the enforcement agent, authority for this. So, I would imagine that they could take court action. Can't speak for them, but they, the Auburn Police Department is the enforcing agency for this bylaw.
Well, my thought process is this. I've seen people go to small claims court and have a judgment awarded, and the person just says, okay, good luck collecting. And I understand that, I'm not saying that to be facetious or make a joke of this. I'm literally concerned with that in the fact that, I mean, I realize, I realize legal action could be taken, but how do we escalate this to the point where we make sure that, you know, it doesn't become a joke and people go, well, that guy didn't pay his and nothing really happened to him, so why should I pay mine? That's ultimately where I'm going. So, I just, I just want to know that there's teeth behind this, that when we set the fee, it's going to be, you know, realistically enforced and not make it harder or have us incur other expenses trying to further enforce it if the person just refuses to, so.
So, I'll just pass this along to you. So, this is the policy we adopt, which is the enforcement procedures, the enforcement, and then, as we have in so many of them, we can attach a municipal lien.
Okay.
And I would just ask members to keep in mind, we just voted on a $75 application fee. So, certainly, you don't want someone to say, well, I'm not going to apply for a license because the penalty is less than the application fee.
Okay. Fair enough.
So, certainly, so certainly the penalty for the violation should exceed the cost of applying for a legal permit. And again, that could be, you know, per day for violation. Per day not to exceed a number.
I make a motion, we make it $20 per day for each violation. And within the course of the first week, it'll, that'll be the application process. So, I would say $20 a day on any violation.
Is there a second?
I'll second for discussion.
Okay.
I don't disagree with the $20 a day. I'm just thinking of, before we do the $20 a day, maybe a specific amount for a first offense because I can certainly see, I can certainly see a situation where, you know, someone isn't doing it to get something over on the Town. It's just an oversight on their part. They're busy, they have a lot of things going on, and they forgot that, you know, the permit expired or whatever it is. I think that giving people one chance, and I mean, we've done that with other things, giving them one chance, and I agree, setting that first, that first amount, maybe, you know, $100 for the first offense or something like that, which is certainly more than the license fee. And then, if a person is a repeat offender, certainly, I have no problem with the $20 a day, but there are instances where people just forget, and I'd rather try to err a little bit on the side of caution on this one, so, this is my thoughts. I'm not disagreeing, I just.
Well, you can also condition the fee on, I believe, you can, you can have a fee set that it could be $20 a day with three days, three business days to file for a permit. And if they don't file for the permit, you can increase that fee. And that covers your concern that people may not be aware that they need it. So, now they've been made aware, and they have three days, three business days to apply for a permit. Mr. Simontian, then Mr. Grossman?
Yeah, I would agree with that. I guess I'd just say five days, only because the Town Hall's open on Mondays is the only day that we're open past working hours. So, if by chance it were to expire on a Tuesday and that person couldn't get there, that three days expired, five days would, there's no way they would miss a month. So, that would be, I would just ask.
I'll amend that motion.
And we're not, we're not just addressing expired?
Oh, right.
It's anyone who just is required to have one.
Right, but like I said, you know, first offense, I'm willing to, willing to give people the benefit of the doubt.
So, Mr. Holstrom, what are you amending your motion to?
We're going to make it the $20 per day, but as you said, the five days.
Right, five days to come in and say, oh, yeah, I forgot.
Yeah.
This expired or I needed to do this.
Give the five-day.
So, five, $20 per day after being.
After a five-day warning.
After a five-day opportunity to apply for the appropriate license.
That sounds good.
And the second came from Mr. Simontian, so I'll amend that.
And I will second.
Sharon, you have that, okay? Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted. Next, we have gift acceptance from Stephen and Nancy Copeland in the amount of $20 for the emergency management, and that is in memory of Robert Geddes for the CERT program. Is there a motion?
Will accept with gratitude, please.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted. Proclamations, we have none. Member items. Mr. Simontian, Board of Selectmen Policy on Electronic Communications. Before you said, I just want to remind you that if you're, the only person that can ask for reconsideration of any policy is a member who voted in the affirmative.
I understand that, and I want to bring up, after our last meeting, I did, I did have a conversation with the Attorney General's Office, and the gentleman that I spoke to, his words to me were, we've basically given the same recommendation to anyone who's asked. He said that they're, what they're working on is still in the works, and I would ask that we amend our policy, consider amending our policy to fit their guidance of that no electronic communications are to be used when there is a motion on the floor. And their reasoning is the exact point that I brought up a couple of years ago when we first talked about this. It's 2013, it's not 1913. There have been occasions where I have certainly taken advantage of the technology to look up something that a presenter or someone else has been discussing to further educate myself or to be able to ask them a question. And I think that, you know, that just gives us an opportunity to make ourselves better to take advantage of the technology that we have. And I certainly understand their concern, and I have the same concern. I would absolutely not advocate for any kind of electronic communication to be used when there is a motion on the floor. So, I'm asking the members of the Board that made the motion for that policy to reconsider based on my conversation with the Attorney General's Office. I think, I think that's fair, and I think that gives any of us the opportunity to be able to find information that could certainly, you know, may not have been something we considered when we were going through the agenda, something that someone presents while they're standing up here or speaking with us, and we can say, oh, I didn't realize that was the case. Look up a mass general law, something to that. It certainly makes us a better Board and gives us a quicker ability to, in some cases, act on behalf of the residents rather than say, maybe we should postpone this for two weeks because we're not sure.
Mr. Holstrom?
I do not wish to reconsider. I think that the electronic devices are a distraction. Also, that when an electronic device is being used during the course of the meeting, let alone during, you know, a vote or of an event that's going on here, that member is not paying attention to the discussion at hand, and that information that he or she may be looking up on the internet is going to be provided by whatever question and answers we have, resources to us. And if we don't have enough information, it's not a problem to move along to the next meeting. So, I would say it's a distraction, and it's also, it takes away from the attention of the members to pay attention to the issue at hand, and I will not reconsider.
Mrs. Brotherton?
I agree with Mr. Holstrom. Mr. Simontian, I, you know, I've sat here many times, and I see the cell phone going off and the vibration, everything, and I figure out like what's going on. Oh, my God, are his kids all right? I think there is a time and a place, and unfortunately, at a meeting, I would never want to be mistaken for this open meeting law concerning whether or not I'm looking something up or somebody approaching me with some concerns. I find them very distracting. I, you know, I have a young kid that's over in the Middle East, I don't know where he is, and my phone is at home tonight because I know that if they need me, they will get ahold of me. So, I have chosen not to carry mine. I do find them very disruptive.
Mr. Simontian?
Yeah, it has, it has nothing to do with that. I, again, you know, I don't, I don't feel it's a distraction. I don't, I don't know anyone in 2013 that doesn't multitask through degree. I have no problem listening to anyone while they're speaking and being able to try to find information. Like I said, it's 2013, it's not 1913, and I think that, you know, to not take advantage of things that are available to us to make us better at what we do seems a shame that we won't. And, you know, there is no issue with open meeting, and that was, that was made very clear to me by the Attorney General's Office, and that, as I said, that is the guidance that they said they have been giving to anyone who's asked the question. We just, we feel that probably the best policy is to not use it when there's a motion on the floor, and I can certainly understand it, so.
And I'll just reiterate my comment, my conversation with the Attorney General's Office, that Mr. Jonathan Sklarzak and the Attorney General's Office said that there was nothing in open meeting law that prohibits the Board from accepting a policy on their own regarding this, and the Board did accept such a policy. Mrs. Brotherton?
I personally find it very disrespectful and offensive when I'm speaking or doing something and someone's on a cell phone or any other device, and I would hope our residents don't view that the same way because I believe that is very disrespectful.
Mr. Grossman, then Mr.?
I'd like to voice that I would not want to reconsider either.
And Mr. Simontian, the last comment?
Yeah, I, I don't think anyone's trying to be disrespectful to any members or to the residents. Like I said, you know, for me, it's a way to be better at what I do appear in some cases. I try to, I try to consider every possible angle of what might be presented, but you can never fully prepare. And people have come up here and said things that, wow, that wasn't part of the presentation. I wonder where they got that from. You know, if I, if I make a decision based on something that wasn't presented properly, shame on me when I have the opportunity to find out whether or not it's true, so.
I think we also are given that opportunity that if we don't understand something, we are given ample time to say, my understanding is not thorough with this, I would like to move this or, you know, table it for another two weeks, please.
And I'm going to move on, there's no interest in reconsidering, but I will say, for a final comment, that I'm but I will say, for a final comment, that I'm sure, because this, this motion, this policy applies to members of the Board of Selectmen, if a member, if something comes up during a meeting, that we need to look up so that all members have the same information, I'm sure that Ms. Jacobson would be willing to Google an item, and whether it's citing mass general law or a policy, so we're going to move this along. Under Town Manager Items, we have the request to declare surplus policy. Mr. Simoneon.
Yeah, I, I just, I have one more, one more thing quickly. It came about after, and it...
Oh, I'm sorry. Member items, yeah.
It's just, it's just for information, yeah. Under Member Items, just informational purposes. Hopefully, within the next two meetings, I, I don't want to go into any detail without Mr. Ethier here, but hopefully, within the next two meetings, we will have a report on the boundaries, final report. So, I just, the process is narrowly complete.
Yeah, and that'll just let us know, because that would be a full Board of Selectmen item, so thank you for that. Any other member items before I move on? Town Manager Item, Request to Declare Surplus Property. Ms. Jacobson.
Through the chair, I'm actually going to ask Mr. Kuzinovich, because he was speaking with Mr. Mitchell on this, this morning. So, just would like him to, but basically, this is our standard form that we submit for pieces of equipment that are no longer functional, and these are the two items, but I think Mr. Kuzinovich has more information for you.
Thank you, Julie. Through the chair, these items have, useful life has come to an end. I can tell you the jet vac truck has been replaced a few years ago, the town purchased a brand new one. We were using this one as a backup. We actually invested about four or five years ago, a sum of about $20,000 or $3,000 to repair the tank on the truck. So, it would not make sense to continue to pour money into a vehicle that is not going to give us a return on that investment. In the Ford F-350 Dump Truck, I believe this is a truck that has a cracked frame, it is unsafe. The town recently purchased two new dump trucks, soon to be delivered, with the third currently being ordered, so the fleet is being updated, and this is one that the town would like to retire and take off the road, given its unsafe condition. So, either we will RFP these items, and see if there's a, a market for these, for parts or whatever else. If not, we will scrap it and, and get the money from the scrap metal.
I'd like to make a motion to, to approve the request to declare the items as property surplus.
And second.
Thank you, third.
Agree.
Okay, next item.
Did everybody vote?
We haven't voted yet, no.
Oh.
Motion was made and seconded, and so you are, it's, so ask for the vote.
Mr. Holstrom.
Yes.
Yes.
Aye.
Aye.
Vote a one.
I'll vote yes.
Okay, we're on the applications, grant applications.
Vote for Authorized Grant Application and Accept Funds for Fiscal Year 13 Civil War Preservation Grants.
Through the chair, just doing some research, I came across a grant that was just recently announced to, it was interesting, it was to preserve Civil War monuments and items, primarily monuments, in a community, and towns are eligible to apply. The funds are available through a combination of the Mass Department of Veteran Services and the Mass Civil War Sesqucentennial Commission, as well as the Mass Foundation for the Humanities, three groups that got together, and we can apply for up to $5,000. It is a matching grant program, so the, if we applied for $2,000, we would have to match with $2,000, which could be done, the matching funds could be allocated with the approval of Finance Committee from the Perpetual Care Fund, Cemetery Perpetual Care Fund. We did identify, I worked with Mr. Kenny Ethier, gave him a call when I saw this come in, to ask if he was aware, our, our local historian, to see if he was aware of any Civil War monuments in town that were in rough shape. And actually, he said there were a couple that really could be, there was one that could be refurbished, and there are a few markers in the cemetery that are no longer, that they need to be constructed, basically. Whatever's left, you can't see them. So, this would be a great opportunity to honor, you know, veterans of the past of the Civil War, apply for some money, and get these monuments repaired as they should. So, I, I think I would like to ask the board to authorize us to expend up to, excuse me, to apply for up to $5,000. We don't have a cost yet, we're working on it this week. I didn't want to miss the opportunity to come to you for authorization. I believe the grant is due in May, so we, we could do two things. You could authorize up to $5,000, and I'll report back to you on what that amount was that we went for, or if you wanted to hold it for two weeks, it's okay to do that. Either way, I, we should have a dollar amount in two weeks, we just wanted to get working on the grant.
Yeah. I wouldn't think we would want to lose the opportunity. Mr. Simoneon.
I, I, I just want to put this out there. I, I didn't realize, obviously, until I got the agenda that this was on here. So, for the sake of disclosure, I've had extensive conversations with Mr. Ethier about this project as we've been mocking miles and miles and talking. So, I, I have no financial interest in this in any way, shape, or form, but I do have some prior knowledge about the project, so I just want to put that out there, that there is nothing for me to be gained by this vote one way or the other.
Madam Chair, just one comment. There is a warrant article going to town meeting, Article 23, that appropriates the match for this grant. So, if the value is less than $5, we can always amend that amount through the motion on May 7. But right now, there is a warrant article earmarking $5,000 as the town's match for this grant, from, from Perpetual Care.
Is there a motion?
I would make a motion to have the board authorize filing the grant applications, receiving expend funds from the FY '13 Civil War Preservation Grants through the Massachusetts Department of Veteran Services, the Massachusetts Civil War Sesqucentennial Commission, and the Massachusetts Foundation for the Humanities.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
And that's for up to $5,000, sorry.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted. The next item we have is Mass Gaming Commission Regulations.
Through the chair, I wanted to share these draft regulations from the Mass Gaming Commission with you. The reason I'd like you to take a look at them is, the regulations have been out, they were on their website a couple of weeks ago, I took a look. I believe since I saw them two weeks ago, they appear to have made some tweaks, and now they're sending this out to communities to take a look and solicit comment. Apparently, there'll be a hearing on May 3 from the Mass Gaming Commission on these regulations, and communities have the opportunity to provide written comment on them if they so choose. I wanted to give you the opportunity to see the gaming regulations and asking you to pay particular attention to the surrounding community section, given the fact that it's been public that there is a proposed gaming facility, a proposed for the city of Worcester. Potentially, the town has the, I don't want to call it the opportunity, but potentially the town would be designated as a surrounding community if indeed there are impacts to the town because of that facility. So, I think it's important for all of us to look at the regulations and just see if there's anything in there that stands out with regard to timing or any comments we want to make, because we most likely will be either designated as a surrounding community or under the regulations, seeking to request consideration as designation, which would hopefully provide mitigation funds if we had any kind of issues that needed to be addressed. And I'm not saying we have any yet, but we may.
Mr. Holstrom.
I have a question. I guess that's kind of speculation, but do you have any idea if anything was to happen in one of the surrounding towns? We couldn't adjust what we have in front of us to whatever project is going in, because nobody has a design, nobody has a specific idea. Can you kind of...
It's my understanding, and again, it's limited to the chair, my understanding of this from people I've, I've called and contacted and the reading that I've done on their website and talking to people at the MMA, is that the Gaming Commission is required, I believe by the law that was passed to allow for gaming, they're required to have these regulations in place before they make the decision as to which proposals they're going to approve. So, the regulations have to come first, then they make their decision on the proposals. But, I'm not sure why, but it appears the proposal had been submitted to the state for consideration prior to the regulations being set. So, I don't, to answer your question, I don't know that communities have the opportunity to go back and change the regulations after the process that they've established.
That was my concern. It sounds like we're going to look at these regulations and, you know, accept them, approve them, what have you, but it's the cot before the horse. We really don't know what the project's going to be, but we're going to vote on regulations, and we don't know if the, how it's going to affect us one way or another, and there may be a change in that regulation because of whatever our project is, you know, designed. So, I don't know, I guess we've got to look into that a little bit further, I'm glad we have that here, so we could take a look at it, but now I understand a little bit more about why this is in front of us now. Thank you.
Oh, you're welcome. And, and through the chair, the chair just mentioned to me, these are statewide regulations regarding all of their proceedings, so I think, from our perspective, the most important section for us to focus on would be a surrounding community. We do not have a proposal for anyone in the town of Auburn, which would make us a so-called host community, so that section of the regulations right now does not apply to us, the applications are in, and those will be the ones that the state Gaming Commission are reviewing. So, I think it, because this is overwhelming, there are quite a few regulations here, but the ones that did concern me, and, and not necessarily positively or negatively, but I wanted to make sure that we were all comfortable with what the regulations were regarding surrounding communities, because we may have to, at some point, either make sure the developer comes to us and says, "We think there are going to be impacts," or that we have the ability as a town to go to the Mass Gaming Commission and say, "We think there are going to be impacts." And they could be positive impacts, or they could be negative impacts. It could be, you know, the additional business in town would be the positive, and the negative could potentially be additional traffic on our roadways. And again, to Mr. Holstrom's point, you're right, we don't know exactly what that proposal is, the city of Worcester does not know all the details of the proposal yet either. So, I think just looking at this to make sure that communities are protected as best they can be and given the opportunity to be heard once those proposals are in place.
Okay, thank you.
And I guess what I would suggest also is, I'm happy to write the letter on behalf of the board that would, you know, say that we've reviewed the proposed regulations, and here are our comments. So, if everybody, if anyone has any comments, if they could submit them through the chair, and then at the next meeting, if the chair wants to read the comments, you can hand them to me, and I'll prepare the letter that addresses all of the comments of the board.
Bless you.
And I apologize, I called it a, yeah, that's right, a surrounding community agreement, that's what we need to look at.
And the last manager item is the Summer in the Park Concert Series Schedule.
Yes, wanted to start promoting our second annual Summer in the Park Concert Series at the Pappas Pavilion at the Dr. Arthur and Dr. Martha Pappas Recreation Complex. We currently have every Thursday night, beginning June 13 through August 22, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. We have different performers coming in. Then we have a couple of rain dates at the end of August, and I believe one after Labor Day that we're hoping not to have to use, but we want to make sure that they're there, especially if we had to prepay any of the performers. The majority, we, we don't, but some do have to be prepaid. All of them require a deposit, of course, so we just want to make sure that we had some rain dates if they're needed. So, here's the lineup, we're going to post this, get it on our website, get it through the newsletter, put it on, going on Auburn Community Television, thanks, Chris. And just trying to make sure that everybody knows, bring lawn chairs, bring blankets, picnic baskets, you know, families. We tried to get a variety of performers, so we've got rock and country and blues and all kinds of different performers. I also wanted to give a, a thanks to Ken Fairbanks and for all the work that he did on this. The Pappas Oversight Committee worked with us to take a list of quite a few, probably 30 different performers, and kind of guide us into which ones they thought might be worth looking into. Ken Fairbanks actually sat down and met with every one of these and came up with the plan and brought it back to the committee, so this is also from the committee with their support as well.
Okay.
So, we're excited. It's, it's a great opportunity, it's a really nice event for families and, and people of all ages. This year, we're hoping that, now that we have some time to plan this, we'd like to work with the senior center to see if we could put some, potentially some events into place at the senior center right before the concerts, maybe a cookout at the senior center, or a dinner type event where the seniors can go to the senior center, have a bite to eat, and we can provide bus transportation down to the concert for them, and then bring them back to the senior center. So, those are the kinds of opportunities we're looking for so that all our residents can get there and enjoy these great performances, and they are free to the public.
Excellent. I think Mr. Grossman has a comment.
Yeah, I believe, didn't last year, didn't we have a few dates that were paid for that were carried over to this year?
Through the chair, you're, you're correct. Last year, we had a $5,000 donation that was given to us from Hometown Bank to sponsor concerts. They actually came to us with the funds toward the end of our concert series, so they gave us $5,000, we used $1,400 to fund two concerts at the end of the year. We carried over the remaining $3,600 to this year, and we added it to a $1,000 donation from Polar, there was another donation, and some event money.
Let's see, yeah, special events money.
Special events money allocated through town meeting for the year, so combined our budget was about $6,500 for the summer. I don't believe we've expended all of that with this, but we were...
So, we're covering.
Yes, we're able to cover all of these. And if there is leftover, Mr. Grossman, that we don't spend, our intent would be to roll that over, you know, toward next year on the donations to continue the concert series, because these are, these concerts are not paid for primarily with tax dollars. I mean, we, we have allocated the funds through town meeting for, for special events, but the bulk of it really has been coming through business community and private donations, which is...
Thank you. And did you have anything else?
I do not.
Okay. We have no tabled items, we have no one left for public comment. We have the, that's what happens when you go after 10 o'clock. We have the minutes of the August 27, 2012 meeting. Are there any corrections or omissions? Hearing none, the chair will accept them as written. I will accept a motion.
I'll adjut.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned.